Now you have seven. Now you have seven.
Perfect, okay. Um, let me just get these stuff in here. And with this being different, um, do I need to read all of that into, um, the record? Or do I just move forward with bringing the meeting to order?
I think you can move forward with it.
So, um, this is Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, I mean, October twenty-first, 2020. And this is the Flint City Council meeting that, um, the replacement for the one that was canceled on the twelfth. And so, roll call, please.
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Davis?
Present.
Mr. Gera? Ms. Fields? Ms. Fields?
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, present, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan.
I think we're gonna do that part next. Ms. Fields?
Yeah, we are. Thank you, Janelle.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Mr. Griggs?
Present.
Ms. Worthing? Okay, that's seven present.
Thank you. And so, now each member, according to, it says pursuant to the newly revised Open Meetings Act, each council member shall state that they are attending the meeting remotely and shall state where he or she is physically located, county or city and state. If we could start with Councilman Mays?
Councilman Mays, just say that you're, you are attending remotely and where you are at this time.
Yeah, um, this is Councilman Mays, I'm attend, um, attending electronically and remotely from Stockton, California, right outside Sacramento, and that is in San Joaquin County.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
This is Mr. Davis, I'm attending electronically from the great state of Michigan, located in Genesee County, in Flint, Michigan.
Okay, I think Mr. Gera said he might not be able to make it. Mr. Gera, are you here?
He's not in tonight.
Okay. Ms. Field?
Uh, Kate Field, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Jerry Winfrey Carter, attending remotely from Genesee County, Flint, Michigan.
Mr. Winfrey?
Herbert Winfrey, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan, in Genesee County.
Ms. Galloway?
Monica Galloway, attending remotely in Flint, Michigan, Genesee County.
Mr. Griggs?
Alan Griggs, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan, in Genesee County.
And did Ms. Worthing make it in?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, uh, did you hear what, what you have to say? Or what you're supposed to say?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, Eva Worthing, attending from Flint, Michigan, Genesee County.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. And all council members', um, contact information is provided, um, in the agenda for the council. That brings us to our pledge of allegiance. Um, Mr. Winfrey, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, is there any moments of silence that any of the council would like to recognize?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Winfrey?
Uh, this is, uh, uh, well, it's, it's really not a moment of silence. I guess you could call it a moment of silence. But I think that we, as a council, should, uh, recognize and, uh, our, um, feelings to the governor of the state of Michigan for what she has gone through with the, uh, with the threats on her life, her and members of her family.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Hearing none. Um, we, we, we can put something together, I would think, for that. So, um, we'll just have a moment. So, the next part, it says for procedures on conducting electronic public meetings, all boards and commissions must adhere to all laws established under the Michigan compiled laws and in accordance with the revisions to the Open Meetings Act adopted in Senate Bill 1108, as passed on October thirteenth, 2020, and signed into law on October sixteenth, 2020. That brings us to the reading of disorderly persons, city code subsections. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code, Section thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed from the meeting. That brings us to, is there any request for changes and/or additions to the agenda?
Madam President, you do have an add-on ordinance?
Yep. Uh, Janelle, can you, um, can you read into the record what the add-on ordinance is, please?
The add-on ordinance is to, uh, extend the ninety, sixty day emergency for the marijuana ordinance?
Thank you. And that'll be under ordinances, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam President?
Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, add a special order about, uh, a draft ordinance for alcohol sales. I'd like, and I'd like for the special orders to come right after appointments.
So, okay, Mr. Griggs, so you wanna add another special order at the end of the other special orders to draft an ordinance for? Is that what you mean?
No, just to discuss the draft ordinance for store hours. And move all the special orders after the appointments.
So, that's one, that's one. And then the second thing you wanna do is you want all of the special orders to be moved. Where is that?
After appointments, right after appointments.
After appointments, but before resolution?
Yes.
Are there any other, um, changes and or additions to the agenda?
Yeah.
So, Councilman Mays, and you said, okay, Vice President Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Mays. Uh, Madam Chair, I don't know if there's amendment to, uh, Mr. Griggs, but I'd like to have discussion on liquor stores and, and, and/or possible violations to, to tie to ordinances and stuff because, I don't know how to word it exactly, but I know I wanna have a special order on a discussion according to liquor stores and gas stations of closing times. Thank you.
Well, so, okay, so I do have that. But can I, can I just ask my colleagues? Um, we have a council meeting scheduled on Monday. We, we've found ourselves in a situation where we're having this meeting today, but we have a meeting scheduled for Monday. And I, and, and, I mean, I'm asking my colleagues, 'cause there should be no special orders on that Monday meeting. I'm asking you all to consider putting this on that meeting since it's only five days away, and, and that way, it would have all the attention and we wouldn't be adding another special order.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
Madam President, once you get the proposed agenda changes, we vote on them in motions. Wouldn't it be proper for you to have your discussion on that during the vote on these issues, rather than, you know, taking away from what we're into by agenda?
I don't believe so, Councilman Mays. This is a request for changes and or additions to the agenda, and I'm making a request to my colleagues. And so, I, I hear what you're saying. What is your point of order, Councilman Mays?
We're not at the discussion on these motions yet, ma'am.
You don't have to be. Do you, are you saying that there's something in the rules that's saying what I'm, what I'm saying during this, um, time of talking about requests for changes and or additions is in violation? 'Cause that's what a point of order is.
Yeah, and you're having discussion and you're prolonging the moment. We'll get to that.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. And so, I'm saying that to my colleagues. Are there any other ones? So, Councilman Mays, I mean, sorry, wait, wait, wait one second, Mr. Griggs. So, Councilman Davis, are you including your discussion with Griggs, or do you want your own? Councilman Davis, are you there?
Oh, I was on mute. Yes, it, it could be included. It could be included. I'm not trying to make it a timely process today.
No problem. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Griggs, you, um, have something else to say?
Yeah, uh, well, to answer Councilman Davis's, uh, question or interest in a violation, what, what a violation would be, that's included in the draft ordinance in front of us tonight.
Is there any other changes or additions to the agenda?
I wouldn't recommend.
Are there any other changes to the a- agenda tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, um, one, I wanna see if we can have a, uh, special order. I don't care where it's located at, but I wanna have a discussion on our leadership vote for next month. I know last August, we did it, and I wanna do it again. So, I wanna have a special order on our leadership vote, um, as it relates to this council that's mandatory in the month of November. I wanna have that discussion, um, today, if possible. It could be under additional council discussion. Is that somewhere on the agenda or new business?
Um, additional discussion items, Councilman Mays.
Okay, I want that specifically in there. And, um, also, I wanna have an additional discussion item. I won't do it as a special order, but I'm requesting an agenda change to add an additional council discussion as it relates to what, in my opinion, the Supreme Court ruling had to do with governor witness powers parallel to our emergency ordinance. So, I guess the quickest way to say this agenda change, we're still operating locally in an emergency, and I wanna talk about what that means for the legislative branch of local government and the executive branch. I want that under any council discussion.
Okay. Anything else, Councilman Mays?
Not at this time. We do, do we have new business on there or just additional council discussion?
Just additional council discussion?
Yeah, I want that to, um, after that, I want new business. In case, uh, I mean, we could do motions and additional council discussion, but I don't know if the council rules as new business or not. It could do or don't, I won't get into it. But forget with the new business, I'll deal with that under any additional council discussion.
Okay. So, if there's no more, we'll vote, um, on the, um, changes. So, the first one is there is an additional, um, an extended emergency ordinance for the marijuana sixty days. Um, is there any discussion on adding that to the agenda? Any discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Mays?
That would, um, um, as an add-on during resolutions, correct?
Actually, it's-
Or it would come on as a add-on during ordinances?
Yes, mhm.
During ordinances?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, roll call on that agenda change.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, zero no.
The vote is eight yes, zero no, so it passes. That brings us to the next request, which was a request by, um, Councilman Griggs to add a special order discussion around liquor stores, an ordinance on liquor stores. Is that correct, Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Okay. And so, is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, it seemed like there's no conflict in having the discussion, which includes both what Mr. Griggs and Mr., um, Davis is saying. Um, that discussion, Mr. Griggs talks about, about the draft ordinance, seemed to parallel with the same type of discussion that could be had that Mr. Davis is talking about. I don't know if he objects or not, but I think that's the same discussion. And, um, we'll see what happens, um, as we go along. I'm gonna vote for both of, both of them combined, because I think they overlap. And, um, I'm ready to have that discussion. So, I'll be voting for a special order. I'm hoping that they're combined.
Thank you. Um, is there any further discussion on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Um, I guess, I guess my problem, um, would be, do we want to add another special order? We already have an executive session. I just, I would just say, can't we wait until Monday to do that, um, that, um, session that, um, Griggs wants to do? I mean, that would be, I think that would be feasible. I think we would have more time, you know, to discuss things. Let's not just, you know, let's not overcrow this agenda. Let's wait until Monday to have that discussion. So, I would, um, I think I'm gonna vote no to have, to add this.
Ms. Field, she's still talking. Ms. Field, she's still talking. One second, please. Ms. Winfrey Carter, are you? I know, I, I didn't hear the last thing that you said.
I said, I'm gonna vote no to add on a special order.
Thank you, Ms. Field?
Yes, um, I'm going to, uh, vote yes on this because, yeah, this is clearly a really pro, a problem in our community. Uh, we've had homicides, um, you know, people are up in arms all across the city about this issue. And I don't see any reason why, I, I think this is a, a primary interest to the populace and the residents, and I think we should start discussing the proposed ordinance tonight.
Is there any other discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Griggs, and then Mr. Davis.
Okay, uh, I'm definitely gonna vote, uh, yes on this, because even the news media's, uh, been picking up on the, uh, a store hours ordinance. And there's no need to add another special order to this, because included in this draft ordinance are the fines in case of violations. So anyhow, I'm gonna be voting yes. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you for endorsing, Madam Chair. Uh, for clarity for Councilwoman Carter, if she wanna drop all add-on, uh, orders or just this one specifically until next week? Thank you.
Ms. Winfrey Carter, did you wanna add anything?
No, I just said the special order, as far as this ordinance.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else that has anything to say? Okay. I, I, I agree, um, there, we have a very long agenda. We also have, um, two, five, seventeen, twelve, fifteen, fifteen resolutions. And, and based on the way that my colleague has made his motion, is to put these special orders before the resolutions. And so, there were already four, um, one, three special orders. And so, I, I think that it is something that, that we should have a conversation about, but all I'm asking is that my colleagues, um, stay as long as it takes to make sure that we get everything done. I would've liked to see the special orders done after the resolutions, if this is the way that the council has it, but, um, I wasn't making the motion. And so, with that being said, no more discussion. This is roll call.
Yeah, Madam President, Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
I don't know if it's not anymore discussion. You asked, was it anyone speaking? You hadn't spoke. I could do my, now I have time on the second round. Somebody talking. You called me, I had the floor, somebody saying something. Somebody saying something? Who was that? Okay, I thought I had the floor. And, um, now let me get my thought back together. Um, where was I at? Somebody was saying something, and it threw me off. I forgot what it was. Um, man, can somebody help me? What was I saying?
We were talking about, uh, uh, adding a special order, Councilman Mays.
Oh, no, I know what I was saying, that the second round, even if you take the first round, you should always ask, is there anybody for the second round? In this case, I have a second round. My point is this, through you to Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis does, uh, Mr. Griggs', um, discussion request satisfies yours as well, do you know?
It depends, uh, uh, the degree, 'cause I know we got different issues according to different wards and styles. So, my problem would be here, but I would be alright, put combining them. I would have no issue combining them.
Okay, so if they call for the next one, we may can say that they are combined and continue to move forward, because we can also carry it over to Monday. But I'm gonna be voting to start the conversation. Mr. Griggs is right, it's been in the media. I'm hearing one side. So, I'll be voting yes to have the discussion. We are the council. We dictate if we vote five or more, what's out there in the public, and what we have as priorities. So, I'll be voting yes. I hope y'all combine them, 'cause it sound like you can do your discussion in what he's saying. This draft ordinance, I'm gonna be eager to hear who happened drafted and what is it talking about? And I'm gonna see if you and Mr. Griggs have a meeting of the minds. So, it'll be an interesting discussion. It might have to postpone to Monday if it get too long, but I'm willing to vote yes. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Griggs, you-
Oh, one last thing, if I may, Madam President. One last thing, if I may.
Once I'm done, I started talking, sir. Um, Mr. Griggs, you, you said something about a draft ordinance. Is that, you, I don't, I don't have a copy of a draft ordinance. Are you just gonna be talking about it?
It was, it was probably, uh, Madam Chair, it was probably emailed to everybody about, uh, two hours ago, maybe, two or three hours ago, in your email, from, uh, Davina.
So, so you're adding on an ordinance in addition? 'Cause I didn't, I didn't get it.
No, I'm adding one, no, no, I'm adding one to the discussion of a draft ordinance.
Perfect, okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Mays, you have one more, well, your time, your, your second round was already up. And so, um, technically, we can just, we can have that discussion when we have the, um, the, when we actually go into that segment of it. So, is there anyone else that hasn't spoken twice? Okay, then roll call on, um, this special order.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one no.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Um, the next change was to have special orders to follow appointments. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, um, I think I'm leaning toward voting no on that. What I'm hating that I neglected to do was request that the public comment come before the executive session. The executive session, as I've looked at that, um, agenda, I looked at the October twelfth agenda as amended. I didn't, um, I don't think it changed, seemed like I had information to tell you. And so, you know, to mute it, unmute, I had to put the agenda on my phone to stay unmuted, and I'll do that probably in resolutions. But I'm really hating that we didn't allow public comment before the executive session, and now we're talking about moving these special orders. In some cases, I'd like that the special orders, where public could comment on some of these hot topics. But my position is this, um, we didn't do that. I mean, I think the executive session might come before public speaking. I hope people will wait, maybe we're gonna be in there long. But I'll be voting no. I think the special orders is a hot topic. This council can adjourn this meeting, and can recess this meeting and come back tomorrow if they want to. Hell, we bout be on phone. I'm giving my destination is Stockton, California. This is the easiest meetings that we can have. No committee meetings. That's why I have no problem with the previous motion to discuss a ordinance. Until this council convenes committee meetings, we should meet long. Business is piling up, but I'm not gonna be moving the hot topics around. The closing discussion of these stores is hot topics. I want the public to hear them, not later on in the night, but first thing, it's been in the news. The seventeen oh-two, um, Kenwood Address residential's been calling in, and they'll probably call in today. It's a hot topic. So, I won't be voting to put them off any longer. I'm gonna try to keep them right where they at. So I won't be voting to put them off any longer. I'mma try to keep them right where they at. The executive session, the closed session is where it's at. And so, I don't care how long this agenda is. I've looked at the resolutions and I'm ready to deal with them. Two or three of them need to be separated. So, you know, we're council people. I'll be voting to leave the, that part of the agenda where it's at so these people can hear the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Griggs?
Yeah, I'll be voting yes to, to move the, these special orders after the appointments. Because there's no need, the appointees, and there's quite a few of them, I haven't really counted what, four or five appointees. There's no need them hanging around for two hours in case somebody wants to talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, if there's no other discussion. Now, that's interesting that Mr. Griggs know appointees is there. Through you, how many appointees are here? Through you to whoever know or to the appointees, how many is here? Maybe Mr. Griggs should've moved them to the front. If his logic is that they don't wanna follow the agenda and hang on and we move and step around for them. Through you, Madam President, to whoever knows, can the appointees identify themselves as to how many of them is here?
Yeah, I can't tell from the phone numbers. It doesn't look like any of them are here, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay, it's Louis Hawkins on the phone. It's Lois Fletcher on the phone. I saw those grand blank addresses and I wanna talk about it. So are they here? I'm listening to Mr. Griggs and his logic.
I don't see them. I guess Mr. Edward-
Okay, so we don't know if they're here. He don't know if they're here. Through you, uh, Madam President, to Lois Fletcher, can I talk to him? If I make my decision. Through you, Madam President, to Louis Hawkins, may I talk to him?
So Councilman Mays, um, as the chair, according to the, um, council rules, the chair can say whether you can speak and you will be able to get to speak to them when that time comes. But right now, we are on a discussion as to whether we're going to move. Councilman Mays, that is the, that is the motion. And so we need to stick there.
Madam President, Madam President, I'm very well versed on the council rules. When you got the floor and it's on a motion, you can ask anybody for information and the right to speak. Now, the chair is being discriminatory if I say through you to Lois Fletcher, through you to Mr. Edwards. And for once in your life, you gonna determine you got the authority to give me the opportunity to speak. Now, I'm not gonna start this meeting appealing your ruling. But every council person sitting under the sound of my voice know that if you deny me the right to go through you to somebody who Mr. Griggs said was relevant, 'cause they were hanging around, I want to know how long they had to hang around. You're dead wrong. And I ain't got nothing else to say. And you need to quit picking on me and discriminating against me because you're making up rules out of your head. You don't have that discretion to treat me differently on my request to speak to any department here to appointee. And as I contemplate a motion, whether they can hang around. Tell Mr. Griggs it ain't relevant.
Councilman Mays, our council rule says council members may request to ask questions of administrative staff, et cetera, during debate on any agenda item. Guest speaker time allowed shall be determined by the presiding chair and is not considered to be a part of the limited debate time allotted to council. And so I'm not trying to be discriminatory, Councilman Mays, um, but you asking-
I know that rule, but what do et cetera mean? Administrative people, et cetera, appointees is a part of, et cetera. This is a debate on whether I will vote yes or no because they can't hang around. Mr. Griggs interjected, they couldn't hang around. You didn't check him, but you checking me. And let's not argue. Move on. It's obvious what you just did and said. I know the rule. I can ask for people.
You absolutely can, Councilman Mays. So we are in a discussion on whether we're gonna move the special orders to after appointment. And so if there's no further discussions, roll call, please. Ms. Fields? Somebody needs to mute some talk. Ms. Fields?
Madam Chair, yes, I, okay. Um, yes.
Where, oh. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
That's six yes, two no. So that's six yes and two no. And Councilman Davis, you said that your, um, request was just going to be included with Mr. Griggs. Is, is that correct? So we don't need to do a roll call on that?
At, at this time, yes. Yes.
Okay. Y- yes, yes, you, yet it is, yes, it is included, or you want a roll call?
It's included.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay. So that brings us to, um, Councilman Mays' request to have a leadership discussion under council, um, discussion items. Councilman Mays, I don't think that requires a vote, but is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, I requested an agenda change to specifically add a discussion about the council leadership as we get ready to vote. I've watched this. I made this speech last year. Some council people objected to the open discussion. But, you know, when we come in in November, they just, I'm there as chair of the meeting, we start making roll calls. I've been around council for thirty years. You have council people talking to each other behind the scenes, in some cases illegally and violation of the open meetings act. You have mayors and all kinda people calling and involved. So I want this council to have the same nerve it had last year. Let's talk about it, 'cause we know it's coming up. If you don't know it, now you know, I'm telling it. So this is a vote on whether or not council wanna have an open discussion in October about what we know will happen in November. I've got that nerve. I'll be voting yes on this agenda change.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing, um, roll call. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Five yes, three no. The vote is five yes, three no, so that, um, discussion item will be on the agenda. Next is the, um, Supreme Court ruling, um, with the governor's executive orders and how that, um, correlates to our local government. Councilman, is there any discussion, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, for months, I've said that our local state of emergency ordinance dictates that the mayor, when he's making decisions about partially opening City Hall, whether we test employees, whether we have curfews, um, I'd be glad to talk about other things. But, I mean, for months, it's been going on and on. The mayor came up last meeting and seemed like he came up with an understanding as we don't know what's going on in the city. I think I do know what's going on in the city, um, and he just wanted to update us. I wanted to talk about the mechanics of how the state of emergency ordinance works. You got to convene with us expediently. And we do not give up our legislative power to make rules, laws, ordinances, amend, change, or modify any that he puts into place. He don't have both legislative and executive power. So I'll be voting yes on this agenda change because I'mma be praying that my colleagues understand their role as legislators and as lawmakers and as lifesavers. You gotta save people's lives. We had an uptick in City Hall and it's got under the radar, Marjorie Raymond, the Flint Journal and everybody. And my position is this, we must have this understanding and discussion, I pray to God. So I'll be voting yes to have this emergency ordinance discussion and an understanding of the mechanics of, in my view, how it clearly reads. Um, seemed like a tenth or eleventh grader could understand this wording. So I wanna discuss it. I'll be voting yes on the discussion, particularly in light of what the Supreme Court did. It kinda scares me and make me think I, think like a, a Republican Supreme Court justice. But it's just the way our law is simpler to read than the state law. But we've got executive branch and legislative branch and we're in an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one no. Vote is seven yes, one no. That passes. So that is all of the, oh, um, and the motion for new business to be added to the council's-
No, point of order, Madam President. I, I would do that request.
Hmm, I'm sorry. Great. Okay, so that brings us to, um, our executive session. The Department of Law request, well, Attorney Wheeler, you can go ahead. Attorney Wheeler, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
The attorney officer says to go into closed session with the pursuit of discussing pending litigation and also a written legal opinion. Um, and for, and pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, you're supposed to do that. The court, for purposes of pending litigation, um, there will be a detriment if it was disclosed publicly and also pursuant to state law under, um, subsection, please hold on a second. Under NCL fifteen point two six three and the, uh, and the exemption status area. And this would be in the matter of-
Point of information.
What's the point of information, Councilman Mays?
What is, can she read into the record the subsection she's referring to?
And since those that are not speaking, mute their phones so that we can just have some integrity in the hearing. 'Cause, um, Attorney Wheeler is going out. I just wanna make sure that we can hear her.
Can you hear me okay?
I can. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm the problem. That'd be, um, under NCL fifteen point two six eight E to consult with an attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy. And also under section H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal law. And that would be in the matters of the Flint water cases, case number fifty five, uh, colon sixteen CB one zero four 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 J E L dash M K M. And also for illegal opinion pursuant regarding the Open Meetings Act and Executive Order twenty twenty seventy five.
Thank you. Attorney Wheeler, were you done because we, um, did a point of information. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um, no, I, I'm sorry, you, no, I did not.
Okay. And so, um, is there a motion from the council?
Madam President.
I'm here.
Councilman Mays and then Ms. Fields?
Yeah, I would move that we go into executive session on the cases and the legal opinion matters that's been stated on the record by Attorney Wheeler. And for, and the legal purposes that she read into the record regarding pending litigation and or material that's exempt from public discussion such as the illegal opinions, and I would so move.
So there's a motion on the floor to go into executive session. Is there support for that motion?
Madam President?
Councilman Winfrey?
I support the motion.
It's been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
Through you to Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Wheeler, do we have guests waiting in the wings?
Yes, it is.
Who and how many, do you know? If you don't wanna say who, how many, because I'm thinking about tableing this till after public discussion or seeing if it can be tabled till after public discussion. I'd rather have the public get in and out and let them two or three attorneys wait. How many, do you know?
Attorney Wheeler, are you there?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. We have, we have three. We have, we have three. There's two outside, one, one inside. And I'd, I'd rather if we could do this now so we don't have to pay them while they wait.
Yeah, well, the state is more liable. I've been watching this wider crisis under three administrations now. And I'm used to attorneys getting thirty-three and a third of percent and the people getting whatever. So I don't mind. They can wait. I've moved to table this until after, um, public discussion.
There's a motion to table the execution. There's a motion to table the executive session until after public comment. Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? That motion dies for a lack of a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Madam President, Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
This'll be real quick, but I thought, I would hope that you would get an ab. But if any discussion, any further discussion on the first round and then is there anybody with a second round? But, you know, I handle it because once I see you clearly moving on, then I interrupt the second round whether it's thirty seconds or one minute. My position is this, um, this council is inconsistent when it come to, in this particular case, public comment and so forth. I would ask the public to hang in there. Maybe the executive session won't be long. The Kenwood residence, I ask them to hang in there. Um, people don't wanna discuss certain things and maybe we'll have two or three meetings before Monday. I'm up for it, even in Stockton, California. So my position is this, um, I'll probably abstain on the vote for an executive session prior to, um, public comment. comment for the reasons it's inconsistent with the pattern of this council for some reason. And so, um, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on executive session.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, abstain on this vote for the reasons that it sends a, um, you know, conflicting message to the courtesies that's been given to the public in the past. So I abstain.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Seven yes, one abstention.
So that is seven yes, one abstention. That motion carries. We will hang up and-
I need to kno- I need to know how to get to executive session.
So one of the ladies, please get Councilman Mays what he needs. So we are recessed to go into executive session.
Madam, Madam President? Madam President? Can we request that they send the, the number to all council people?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
And to everyone else, if you stay on the line, they will be back.
I'm on the line with the city council right now. Listening to WFVO ninety-two point one LPFM Flint may cause one to think, may cause sleeplessness, agitation, motivation, and a strong desire to get involved. In rare cases, some may experience euphoria, a sense of community, and a relief of futility. Some listeners have reported in-depth, informed conversations, a better understanding of diversity, and a strong desire to get along. Be warned that programming on WFVO ninety-two point one LPFM Flint is not for those prone to intolerance, prejudice, and/or bigotry. Before ingesting WFVO ninety-two point one LPFM content, listeners are advised to seek the advice of community advocates, activists, and supporters. WFVO ninety-two point one LPFM Flint listeners are encouraged to do their own research and seek out opposing views.
... Two hundred and fifty thousand a year. Jervell Murdoch, Murdoch makes a hundred thousand and, and a free city truck. Marjorie makes over a hundred thousand. We never see any of them pick up a damn thing because all they care about is their bank account. Thank you for indulging. The Anderson Family, Ward Two. The next one is from Kelly Swanson. "We're in the sixth ward and we feel like our councilman does nothing. He doesn't answer his phone, he doesn't respond to emails, he's just full of hot air. And I bet he vocally does not support this nine P M. ordinance because he's done nothing to shut down the drug houses and party stores here. Does hot air Herb Winfrey work for the sixth ward residents and homeowners of it or does he work for slum lords, corner store merchants, and tax dodging nonprofit millionaires like Glenn Wilson? Glendale Hills is turning into a dangerous slum because of Herb Winfrey. You've done nothing for this ward, Herb, and you are not using your city phone or email. Sure sounds like someone trying to dodge Freedom of Information Act because of potentially illicit activity. Can't wait until you're voted out of office next summer." Thank you, Kelly Swanson. The next one's from Michael Ellard. He needs asking about the Court Street construction. "Why can't this project be completed? Court Street has been a debacle from the beginning with no information available to residents affected by this. There is no sign this project is anywhere near completion. Calumet Street is all but destroyed. Constant traffic noise and dirt from the-
Never mind.
Made it impossible to enjoy any outdoor time this summer. Cars, trucks, and equipment run stop signs and speed through the neighborhood night and day. We are very surprised a biker or walker hasn't been hit. As mayor, you need to contact the company and get information out to residents. I and my neighbors would like to know if this company is being fined for their inability to complete this project." Michael Ellard, sixteen oh two Calumet Street. The next one is from Donna Baldwin. "Thank you Maurice and Beverly for cleaning up Civic Park. Love Blues and News, the most entertaining and insightful podcast there is every Saturday morning. Praying you're successful with this new nine P M. ordinance. Enough is enough is right. Homeowners are terrorized, scared to leave the house after dark. Wish we could move to Flushing or Bloomfield or Fenton by the rich store owners. They don't want none of this mayhem near them or their families, but they push it on black folks all night. Bless you all, Donna." Next one is from Jackson Alexander. "Can the city please enforce the no parking on front lawn ordinance? It's an issue all over and just gets worse. This is low class and ruins the perception of the city. I'm told some of the neighborhood enforcement officers they've hired think it's okay and refuse to write tickets for it. Hope that's not true, but it, it would explain a lot, I guess. And hopefully the new police chief starts writing speeding tickets. I haven't seen a Flint cop give someone a speeding ticket in at least ten years. I understand not wanting to be harsh on a poor community, but you have to draw the line with maniacs who drive two and three times the speed limit, weave in and out of traffic, and run red lights, often in school zones. Put these maniacs in jail and seize their cars. And I fully support the nine P M. store closing time. If I need gas after nine P M., I can easily get it on Center Road or Bristol Road. Flint needs aggressive and bold leadership or nothing will ever improve. Heck, even Walmart is closing at ten P M. in Burton and Grand Blank. Nothing good happens in Flint past nine P M. Lastly, just wanna thank Monica, Monica Galloway for her service." Jay Alexander in the seventh. The next one is from Tamara Harris. "Could you try to bring up speeding and reckless driving enforcement? Will Flint Police Department and State Police please write the speeding tickets and impound some cars for reckless driving in school zones? In, like reckless driving in school zones, no less, thirty per mile zones, and they go seventy, eighty, ninety per hour all day, all night. We've never seen someone pulled over from Matz, D C. to Kettering U. and all the elementary schools in between. Not once in years. I'm also writing this evening to support Mayor Neely's plan to close all liquor stores and gas stations at nine P M. Please do this immediately. These bloodsucker stores have preyed on this town for far too long. Everyone I know with a little change in their pocket has moved away or wants to move away because of the late night crime, cr- chaos, noise, and family destruction these stores promote. We all know what these stores are about. Let's not play dumb and let's not pretend these are honorable businessmen. These owners are all multimillionaires preying on our souls and robbing our quality of life. God bless. Tamara in the first." The, the next one is from, I think I may have already read one, some, or I'm not sure. Kelly Swanson. "I'd first like to thank the Clerk's Office and Janelle for their tireless efforts during this pandemic and giving us a chance to contribute to the city's discourse. We are in the sixth ward and we're just so frustrated. Our councilman Herb Winfrey does nothing to help this ward nor Glendale Hills. Crime, blight, slum lords, group homes, and trash have never been worse. Herb does not answer his phones, he does not respond to emails, he insists we call on non-city issued devices." I think I already read this one, I'm really sorry. Sometimes they send in multiples. The next one is from Eleanor Jones, fifth ward, Keridge Town. "My husband and I would like to extend our support for the nine P M. ordinance to close all the gas stations and liquor stores. The gas station near us is open all night and it's nonstop issues and crack dealing, and the clerk shot a man just a few months ago. The drivers speed in and out of it all night and you can tell most of them are drunk or high. Then another twenty-four hour day, a ga- gas station just opened on the edge of the ward on West Court Street across from the Depp School and Powers. How does that help this city or our neighborhood? It just drags us down and makes us look like a slum. When are our neighborhood interests going to take precedence, precedence over corner stores and gas station owners? If folks need gas after nine P M., let them drive to the townships of Burton, whether it's Corona, Miller, Bristol, Center, Pearson. All the quiet and peaceful suburbs do just fine closing down their residential gas stations at nine or ten P M. But Flint has to live with twenty-four seven drama because nobody cares about black folks. Also saw an agenda item, a vendor for a hundred and forty thousand in electrical supplies. Is that to finally replace all the downed decorative street lamps in wards five, six, and eight around Eisenhower, Powers, and Kettering? If so, thank you very much. But if not, why not? Jerry put in a referral about those light posts getting back, getting put back up months ago. A dozen of them have been missing for over a year. Lastly, I wish Jerry could make a complaint about the blight department. The garbage and trash is just all over. We've never seen it this bad. This town is so nasty and filthy, it looks like a city that's given up. And parking on the front lawn is supposed to be illegal, yet nobody at the city enforces it anymore. I know there's lots of problems here, but sometimes it feels like nothing is- and maybe some speeding enforcement in these school zones would be nice. Folks go in literally ninety miles an hour down Sugar Lay and University. Thank you all for serving and I hope everyone's family is safe and healthy. Eleanor Jones, fifth ward." The next is from Robert- Problem. One is from Elise Bell. "Dear City Council, I'm Elise in the fifth. The lovely Jerry Winfrey Carter is our councilperson. Motivated to write tonight because I saw on ABC twelve and NBC twenty-five that you're going to finally close down all the stores at an earlier hour. Just wanna say thank you, Jesus. About time. And please consider having Blight Crew or Landscaping Company clean up I sixty-nine and I four seventy-five through Flint. Everyone makes remarks about how nasty it looks right when you enter Flint. Bless you all, Elise." The next is from Veronica Parker in the ninth ward. "Ms. Co- Ms. Worthing is our councilwoman. Please pass that nine P M. ordinance to close all the liquor and gas stores at nine P M. It's an injustice that this poor black minor- majority community is poisoned all night by these predatory owners while more affluent families in the suburbs get peace and quiet. These stores leech on the depression and hopelessness in this downtrodden community. It's so wicked. Our reputation has been destroyed. People mock us for being nothing but nasty water, corner stores, and crime. It's comforting to hear the mayor's office and city council may finally weaken their stranglehold on this community. Thank you, V. Parker, ninth ward." Next one is from Allison Mayer. "Dear City of Flint, I just wanted to share a story that happened yesterday in Detroit as we in Flint rubber stamped all these marijuana shops around Flint and they even tried to put one in Woodcroft Residential Neighborhood and pretended it was no big deal. The Woodcroft homeowners were even attacked and ridiculed." Well, a broad, they, a broad day shootout just happened at a marijuana shop in Detroit yesterday. Detroit, Fox Two. This is a story. An attempted robbery at a medical marijuana dispensary in Detroit goes sideways for the suspects as the would-be victims put up a fight. Two people working inside opened fire on three armed suspects trying to rob the store. Now, two of the three, three suspects are in police custody while recovering at a local hospital. She gives a link to the story. That's why we don't want this anywhere near residential neighborhoods. And it isn't just about rubber stamping too many marijuana shops in Flint. It dovetails on way too many liquor stores, corner stores, and twenty-four seven gas stations your predecessor ruined this town with. We absolutely love the early closing time ordinance idea. The draft is perfect. Please get this done. Thank you all. Be well. Ally." And that, Madam President, is the last one.
Thank you so much. That brings us to public comment, uh, I mean, um, council response. We'll start with, um, Ms. Worthing tonight, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I, I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs? Mr. Griggs, did you have any public resp- I mean, response to the public? Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I had, I had myself muted. Uh, this is to, um, Ms. Ingram and Ms. Rio. Uh, the, um, uh, Ward Eight, I think, Crawford Estates, from A one, and then Dollar Lots, to, uh, that's in ten thousand square feet, I believe. However, it doesn't really matter, uh, it's what our business, or the end, there's-
Mr. Griggs, Mr. Griggs, I don't want you to lose up your time. Um, you're, you're going in and out, it's not clear, so I didn't want you to-
Okay.
Not realize it.
Is it, is it-
Now, can you make sure he gets time? You're better now. No, you were. Now I can't hear you.
Hello?
Now we can hear you, Mr. Griggs.
Oh, okay, good. Uh, anyhow, to, again, to Ms. Ingram, Ms. Perio, Mr. Harris, uh, there are zoning regulations that have been in a draft stage for seven years. And you can see those zoning regulations down in the basement of City Hall at the, uh, in the Planning and Development Department down in the basement. Uh, they're about an inch and a half or two inches thick, uh, but they go into what businesses are allowed or not allowed in residential areas. And when these regulations finally get approved, uh, then they'll be enforced. But they haven't been approved yet. And, uh, now's the time to be looking at it. About five years ago, I had, uh, off-street parking introduced into the zoning regulations, where any business, residential business, has to provide off-street parking. Uh, and then to Ms. Ellie Elise Bell, uh, you know, I adopted, uh, we adopted a three, three-mile section of State sixty-nine, uh, four, five years ago. And I know there's trash out there, and, you know, you wouldn't believe what the stuff we pick up out on I sixty-nine, both east end and westbound. And I wish that other people would get a hold of M-DOT and start adopting sections of highway, uh, there and on four seventy-five, too, that you mentioned. Okay, that's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winfrey?
Thank you, Madam President, and to all of the, uh, all of our constituents that, that, that responded, whether you were in person or whether you wrote. You know, sometimes we hear some really good things. Sometimes we hear some things that's kind of southward, as, as I would use the term. But it's good to hear what our people are saying, because then that's the only way, or one of the ways, I should say, that we can, we can begin to address the issues. To my, uh, issue or issues, to my constituent, Ms. or Mrs. Kelly Swanson. Mrs. Swanson, I, I'm not sure what you mean by the Freedom of Information Act. I, I tried my best to listen, but I didn't catch it all. Uh, but every time you speak or send correspondence, I try my best to get in contact with you. I have left my number for you to call, and you've never called me on that number. You've never called me. I've asked you not to use the city number because I don't have the city cellphone. My cellphone, again, is eight-one-zero-six-nine-one-seven-four-six-three. I would really like to discuss some specifics with you, because I'm not aware of what it is you're, you're, you, you want me to do. If there is an issue that you need me to address, I am willing to address it, but I've got to know what it is. And it's got, you know, uh, I've even, uh, as far as Glendale Hills, I'm in contact with Glendale Hills residents, uh, almost weekly. And I, I, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm in contact with the, uh, president of Glendale Hills Neighborhood Association. I've even inquired, uh, of the president of the Glendale Hills Neighborhood Association that they can give you my number. Because when they want me, they call me, or they even send it through my email. Uh, so if you really want to get in contact with me, my number is eight-one-zero-six-nine-one seven-four-six-three. And I promise you, if you call that number, I'll either answer or I'll call you back. And if there is an issue that you need me to address, I will do that as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first, I would like to thank all of the public speakers and those, um, individuals who also emailed their, um, comments in. Um, I would like to say to Mrs. Jones, I want to thank her for, um, for, um, sending in her email. Um, I will save all of my comments about the neighborhood safety officers, um, for tonight. We're gonna have a special order, and we're gonna talk about enforcing the ordinances and, um, and everything that you mentioned, um, during your, um, the reading of your email. And I think that's it. I, um, um, I wanted to also say to my constituents of the fifth ward, if you have any complaints, issues, or concerns, please do not hesitate to call me. Call me at area code eight-one-zero-three-nine-seven-three-six-two-one. And, um, I will help you to, um, resolve your issues or concerns. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Fields?
Yes, I'd like to respond to the first gentleman who spoke with complaints about the Holiday Inn Express. Um, I would suggest a couple of things. One, I'm not totally sure which ward that was, is in, but I would call your councilperson to get them to work with you on this. And I don't know if your company is still employed.
Madam Chair? One second, one second, Ms. Fields. Can you guys mute whoever that is, Janelle, to be, and, uh, make sure that Ms. Fields gets her time? One second, Ms. Fields.
Sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
Okay. So my suggestion is, first of all, get with your councilperson, find out what ward that's in, and get with your councilperson to get you to help them with that. Um, texting our police chief about if you think there's so many illegal activities going on. Um, um, I, I would try to address this directly with the chief. Um, also, Holiday Inn is a corporate brand, and I would assume that the national, international Holiday Inn, that they have some connection. I'm sure they would not be happy to hear about the conditions with the bedbugs and the activities going on. Find out, uh, who owns that, or, or how you can, you know, get a hold of corporate headquarters and make complaints. So, um, I guess that's, um, most of the comment I'd like to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to say this for all of the residents in the City of Flint. This is Vice President Maurice D. Davis. Uh, it's time out for them liquor stores and their violations. I don't care where you live, within the vicinity of City of Flint. They gonna line up because they've been a detriment in this city much too long. The blight, the crime, our extra resources have to be put over there. Enough of that mess is enough. And they get even vociferous when they get huffy about keeping and cleaning up their property. The lottery and outside is unsafe environments. And we ain't gonna tolerate it another second. Especially in my ward, I can speak personally. You know, people have lost their life, balloons on every corner. That's gonna cease. We will be working diligently and having a conversation, discussion, even this evening, on the ordinances and everything else far is violations of them type establishment and/or gas station, sir, slash service station. We are tired of it. All they do is take away from this community, lottery, and on and on and on, stuff that people already hardship do not need. Liquor, they do not need, but if you're grown, you can get that. But you get it at a reasonable hour, like the homeowners are stating. Every homeowner on the side of my voice, you understand, they're not giving away houses. We gonna clean up this city from the top to the bottom, but we must start somewhere. With crime, and that's gonna be them liquor stores and gas station. Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Mays?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Winfrey, you spoke about the executive session on the water crisis. I don't know if it was the settlement of the water crisis or what. But I was not in that executive session. I want the city to know I'm a plaintiff. I'll continue to be a plaintiff, or I'll end up, I'm filing objections to the settlement with other attorneys. That lawsuit settlement, from what I know, it doesn't cover adults. Um, it covers children. It covers people with documentation. So we'll see as we draw close to the public details and the claim period. But I was not in that executive session, and, um, I'll continue to talk about the water crisis that I have for the last four or five years. You got councilpeople saying, what have you done, Councilman Mays? What have you done, anything? Yeah, we were key players in the water crisis. Mr. Griggs, you keep saying five to four years ago you adopted or did something. I thought you was only on the council three years going into four. That kind of baffles me. What are you talking about? Four or five years ago, you introduced and adopted. You have to listen close to what folks say, particularly elected officials. I've heard everybody talking about the liquor stores, the gas stations. But when we get into that discussion, I'm gonna make it clear. I even seen the mayor's sample of four quadrants and a thousand cars, which they say is about two percent of the police cars. The other ninety-eight percent might be in the community. People waiting three, four hours for police, aim but six cars a shift. The people that's proposing this cut-down on crime ordinance is the same people who voted no to put police on the streets. This council has squandered along with the Mayor Neely administration, in my opinion. Twenty-four million dollars. I'll wrap up, and I'll get more into this when we get into the special order on it. How you gonna vote no to put police on the street to take care of these problems, but then get creative to shut businesses down? I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you to all the residents that, um, sent in their, whether it was written or spoke publicly. And so, thank you. That brings us to petitions and unofficial communication.
Madam President?
Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, I wanted to correct, uh, Councilman Mays.
Council, wait. Mr. Griggs, you can't. Mr. Griggs, that's out of order. Councilman Griggs, Mr. Griggs, please, Mr. Griggs, you are in violation. And so, we will move on. We are at petitions and unofficial communication.
Yes, we have one, Madam President.
We are at communications from the mayor and other city officials.
There is one.
Any additional communications?
There are none.
That brings us to appointments. The first appointment is for the Human Relations Commission, Ward Eight. Councilman Griggs.
Does that mean I can speak right now?
No, that means you can speak on your appointment. We are at appointment two zero zero four two two, which is your appointment to the eighth Ward.
Yes, I don't know if Ms. Bowhouse is on the phone right now, but, uh, uh, I went to other, uh, people, constituents, and, uh, came down with her. Uh, actually, I made the appointment of her over a year ago. And, uh, but then I.
Point of order.
Yes, what's your point of order, Councilman Mays? Yep. What's your point of order?
Yeah, I thought y'all liked to threw me out of meeting and enroll repeatedly. It needed to be a motion first. I don't know if the motion first applied, but that's my point of order.
Thank you, sir. You are right. Mr. Griggs, please do a motion, and then you can discuss your appointment.
Make a motion that we approve, uh, Susan Bowhouse for the Human Relations Commission, or Commissioner.
There's a motion to approve Susan, um, Bowhouse for Human Relations Commission, Ward Eight. Is there support for that motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Davis?
I second.
Has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, I just, uh, I had appointed Ms. Bowhouse more than a year ago, and, uh, but then I was told to wait for an ombudsman. Then we got an ombudsman, and then I was told again to wait until she was ready. So anyhow, this is kind of long overdue, but this is, uh, my best pick of the, uh, the group. And if you'd like to, uh, have her speak, or anybody would like to ask her questions, I think she may be on the phone right now. Uh, if you could please check.
Mr. Griggs, I don't see her. If she has a different name or phone number, you'll have to let me know.
Uh, it'd be two-three-two-nineteen forty-two. It'd be Susan Steiner Bowhouse. You, you don't have her? I can call her.
I, I do. It's under a different name. I will unmute her. Okay.
This is Susan Steiner Bowhouse. I am present.
Thanks, Ms. Bowhouse. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bowhouse?
Well, Councilman, Mr. Griggs, I'll go ahead, and, um, are you done?
I am, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to have discussion on this appointment? Anyone else?
Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, we are not having committee meetings. We're not having governmental operation meetings of no kind. And these appointments have came on the agenda, and I'm not sure exactly what's going on with these human relations departments, 'cause if people have been talking outside of meetings, I don't know. But this would be the first discussion. I'm not gonna vote on them. I'm not gonna move on them. I think they should be tabled, but my position is this and why. How many members are on the Human Relations Commission, and where do they come from? Do you, who, ain't anybody who know? 'Cause we gotta, I gotta find some stuff out. Who appoints them? How many of them, and where do they come from?
Madam President, I, I can answer that.
Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, uh, one is appointed by each of the nine councilpeople, and then they report to the ombuds person. Thanks.
And is the Human Relations Commission nine people total?
I believe it is, plus the ombuds person.
Do anybody know?
Ms. Angela?
Angela?
Ramire?
Is that crew by Councilman Galloway? Okay. Um, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, it's, uh, nine members, um, that make up the Human Relations Commission, and they're each appointments by the, from the nine wards, by council.
Okay, so those are the only appointments, those nine? No other appointments to Human Relation Commission?
That is correct.
Are all of them staggering terms, all of them three-year terms, no matter when they start?
Let me double-check that.
Yeah, I want to see what the charter say. We haven't even discussed the makeup and the intent, and I can't vote on this stuff without knowing under this new charter what's going on. I seem like I seen an appointment from Grand Blank reappointments. Right, she's looking at that. Do anybody see those reappointments? Ain't that the Human Relation Commission as well? And how would they be reappointed under the new charter if we ain't never appointed
This is Angela.
Point of information? Point of information?
What's your point of information?
Is, does Mr. Mays have his agenda? Because the other appointments are for the DDA, the reappointment, DDA, not for the human relations.
I have access to an agenda, and, uh... And, um, I do recall now that Lois Fletcher and, um, Louis Hawkins was reappointments to the DDA. I can appreciate that. I'm now looking at the Human Relations Commission, but no, I was mixing the two.
Um, this is Angela. Um, under three dash five one two of the Human Relations Commission under subsection B, the Human Relations Commission is comprised of nine members, one from each ward.
Okay, do it say anything about any staggered terms or three-year terms or anything of that nature?
Okay, yeah. Um, I'm not seeing that.
And the purpose, the purpose of the Human Relations Commission? I'm just, can you read it in the rec?
Yes, um.
That's just what would happen in committee meetings before I make an appointment.
Yes, as in three dash five one five one twelve, five one two A, um, the ombuds person shall organize the Human Relations Commission charged with the responsibility of reducing unlawful discrimination and increasing mutual understanding among the residents of the community.
Okay, I'll look at it, uh, Ms. Willard and to the council. You know, this council can vote on what they wanna do. They can approve it. When we get to the seventeen oh two Kenwood, uh, Mr. Griggs, I'm just gonna be frank with you. I'm suspicious of your recommended appointments because of what done happened with Ms. Sorensen. I'm suspicious of you not really living in the Eighth Ward and living in the Sixth and operating that business. I'm suspicious of Ms. Sorensen living in the Seventh but operating in the Sixth. And now you got an appointee who I can't even talk to. But you thought I could. I don't know. She might be a nice-
Excuse me, please. This is Susan Steiner Bowhouse. Your appointee from Mr. Alan Griggs. I would wish to-
Point of order. Point of order.
What is your point of order? Um, first of all, I, I think, what's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
She can't just butt in, but I'm hearing it. I'm glad she did, but still, less than she could say, "I'm here," and then I'll take it from there.
That's right. And so, um, just, just for all appointments, all, wait a minute, Councilman Griggs, for all appointees, and until someone allows you to speak, you cannot just speak up. Mr. Griggs.
Yeah, well, in-
Point of order. He didn't call us privileged motion. I got the floor.
Right. And Councilman Mays, you do have the floor. So, Mr. Griggs, just one second. So, go ahead, Mr. Councilman Mays. So, she is on-
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you to the appointee. If she wanna introduce herself and got something to say now that she's come on board, I would like to hear from her.
All right, Councilman Mays, um, you said that you would like to speak to me. I am, yes, a member of Councilman Griggs's ward and that is where it stands. Um, Councilman Griggs put my name into nomination for the Human Relations Commission, I believe it was over a year ago. And I have been standing by. I have been participating and listening to the council's, um, membership and to all of everything that you have had to say. And I am offering myself to be an impartial and a good servant to the Human Relations Commission, representing the Eighth Ward.
Uh, Madam President, through you to the, um, proposed appointee. Ma'am, can you tell me your name again?
Susan Steiner Bowhouse.
Steiner Bow, Steiner Bowhouse?
Yes.
Did I say it right? Steiner Bow, Steiner Bowhouse?
Yes, you did, Commissioner Ma, um, Councilman Mays. I did submit my curriculum vitae to the, to the council and I believe that it was presented to you. And you should have that before you. And I hope that you have read it and that you, if you have any questions about it, please address me now.
Yeah, you, that's what I'm trying to do, Mrs., um, Steiner Bowhouse. Um, let me ask you this question. Do you live in the, um, Eighth Ward? You not going back and forth like some people, I suspect, are you?
I live, I have been a, a voting resident in the Eighth Ward for the last thirteen years.
Ms. Steiner Bowhouse, now, if you've been waiting for this appointment for a year, you sound sincere. I'm liking you already. Can you tell me, Councilman, you're welcome. Can you tell me, Councilman Mays, what is this Human Relation Commission under this new charter? I'm, I'm suspected in a year you done glanced at it. Hit me to what's happening and what you figure you'll be going in there to do.
Well, as I can consider myself going in there to do. I mean, the new, the new, um, proposal has, as has been presented, is still in flux. Um, I believe that it will be to work not as an ombudsman. Believe me, I fully respect our new ombudsman, who is now in place. But it will be to work on an interior fashion, to work with all members of the community, to work with them, to work with all of the complaints, all of the possible identifying factors where we can become stronger and where we can go forward to make the greater Flint. I am just one of, one of many who are going to be appointed to ward representatives for the Human Relations Commission. I am just one. And together with all of the other members who have been appointed to these commissions from the different wards, we will get together and work together as a unified vision for the city of Flint.
I'm sure you will. Let me go piggyback on that. As you know, you might have me so. We'll see, I'll see. But let me ask you this question. In what area?
Councilman Mays, your time is up. Even after they added, um, the allotted time for the appointment to speak.
Oh, you telling me with Angela and the, okay, Ms. Nan, now, this the type of stuff that messes me up. I would move to table this appointment until, um, we can have adequate discussion.
May, may, excuse me, sir. May I ask when that might be?
Hello? Wait a minute, please. Please allow us to go through the motion. And, and if anything goes on, we will give you all the information you need.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, please, please mute in case, just to help. Um, there's a motion on the floor to table this. Until when, Councilman Mays?
Until these rules or till you allow an adequate discussion? You know, I don't, you know, I don't, I didn't know the time was like that. Them people talk way more than me.
Um, so, there's a motion to an inadequate time. Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion? That motion dies for lack of a second. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for their first round?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Griggs, you spoken for your first time, sir.
All right.
Is there anyone that would like to speak for a first time that has any questions? If not, then we are on our second round. Mr. Griggs.
Okay, uh, in light of the reasons that, uh, Councilman Mays says he doesn't trust anything I do, I did wanna correct that, uh, I adopted a three-mile piece of, uh, Interstate sixty-nine before I was a city councilman. I did have a productive life before city council. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for a second round? Anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none. Roll call on the appointment, Madam Chair. And, um, um, clerk.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays? Uh, looks like Mr. Mays left the meeting. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yeah, point of, point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I hit the hang-up button instead of the unmute button on this roll call.
Then we'll get you. Go ahead.
Mr. Mays?
I abstained as I was cut off in the middle of, um, talking to the candidate. I abstained for that reason.
And Ms. Fields, I think I heard you, but could you repeat?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Seven yes, one extension.
Motion is, um, passes with a seven yes and one extension. That brings us to our next appointment, which is-
Madam Chair.
Wait a minute. Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, I just need to, uh, if you could repeat what I said to Councilman Mays, uh, before he hung up.
Councilman Griggs, wait a minute. Mr. Griggs, you're getting ready to be disrupted. We are past-
Point of order, Mays.
Remember, what is your point? No, Councilman Mays, what is your point of information?
Is it something Mr. Griggs want me to hear?
No, that's not, that's not-
You can say it.
And so, this is the thing, Mr. Griggs. You will have time during your final comments to revisit that. But we are moving on. So, we are on the next appointment, which is two zero zero four three zero. The appointment to the Human Relations Commission, Gregory A. Easton for Ward Seven. And I can't make the motion. I'm asking my colleagues, Councilwoman Fields.
Madam Chair. Um, since this is your appointment, but as chair, you can't make the motion. I will make the motion for you. I move the appointment two zero zero four three zero to the Human Relations Commission of Gregory A. Easton in Ward Seven.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
I don't know where you and Ms. Fields get that rule from. There's no rule under a nine-member body that a chair can't make a motion. So, I don't know what y'all saying, but my point of order is whether it's mute or not, you and Ms. Fields is both misguided about what a chair can do.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor to approve the appointment of Gregory Easton for Ward Seven, Human Relations Commission. Is there support for that motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Davis?
I second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that Mr. Easton is on the line. Janelle or Jennifer? Thank you, Mr. Easton. So, I did just read out so that I can see if my colleagues have any questions. And so, I appointed, uh, Mr. Easton. He is in the Seventh Ward. He has, um, been in the community for quite some time and I think that he'll, um, be a great asset to that, um, board. And so, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President. Through you to Mr. Easton. Good, good evening, Mr. East.
Hello, Mr. Mays. How are you doing?
Fine, and you?
Just fine.
Mr. Easton, can you, were you on the phone listening when I was asking the other, um, proposed appointee who has now been appointed some questions? Did you hear those line of questions?
No, I did not.
Okay, let me ask you this question, Mr. Easton. What, under the new charter, if you looked at it and if you know, what is the purpose of this Human Relations Commission? Because we not having committee meetings. They haven't discussed what it is. We got these cockamamie rules about five minutes on appointments. No committee meetings interviewing people. Tell me, Mr. Easton, because I haven't looked at it in detail. Do you know what this new charter is dictating that this, uh, Human Relations Commission do?
No, I do not.
And, Mr. Easton, do you know how many members is on it and who appoints them?
No, I do not.
Well, Mr. Easton, I know you. And you just answered them question honestly. And I just had an honest conversation with you about what I do know and don't know and what these cockamamie council rules is, um, hindering me from doing on these important appointments. I think I know you somewhat. You was a city administrator at one point, correct?
Yes.
I know the family member as far as who, um, you're married to, 'cause you're married, correct?
Yes.
And I'm gonna vote for you because of that and because of your honesty. You just try to make up no answer. You say you ain't looked at it. I know you intelligent enough to handle it. I'm gonna see what this Human Relations Department do in the area of discrimination and others. I was asking the other appointee. I think you qualified to handle it. You can handle some of these positions these folks got on the council and more. So, I ain't gonna have a problem. I mean, what I wanna do, Mr. Easton, is abstain because of these cockamamie rules, no committee meetings, no government operations. People don't be knowing and they act like they know and they so professional. But because of your honesty and the way I do know you and your intelligence, I wanna vote for you. But if you hear me change my mind 'cause it's a mess and abstain because of the cockamamie procedures and rules, don't take them, take it personally. Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Thank you, Ms. East.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? If there's no further discussion, roll call on the appointment, Madam Chair. No, I'm the Madam Chair. Um, Madam Clerk, I can't see what's there.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Vote is eight zero, or eight yes, zero no.
Thank you. The vote is eight yes, zero no. Approving Mr. Easton's appointment to the Human Relations Commission. Thank you, Mr. Easton.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That brings us to our next, um, reappointment, two zero zero four three one. Is there a motion?
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Winfrey?
I am moved for the reappointment of two zero zero four three one and that is for Robert C. Kettle. Uh, he's being reappointed to the Downtown Development Authority.
There's a motion to reappoint Robert C. Kettle? Is there a support for that motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Davis?
Madam Chair. I second.
Mr. Davis? It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, through you to our staff or whoever is, this gentleman on the line.
I don't see him on the line.
Now, Madam Chair, doesn't his, he show a grand blank address?
He does.
And I'm concerned, why would I want grand blank to govern, um, Flint's Downtown Authority? I don't care who it is. What is the logic in that? Can anybody answer who is on the line and was connected with the Downtown Development Authority? Any colleague or anybody in the administration? Hearing none. I'm gonna move to table it until the next council meeting.
There's a motion to table until the next council meeting. Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? Madam- Madam Chair? Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I'll support that motion.
It's been moved improperly supported. Is there any discussion on- wait, one second, y'all, one second. Um, I- I always have a problem with which of those motions has discussion, one has discussion and one does not, so... So, a motion to postpone temporarily or to resume consideration shall be decided without debate. So, roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, three no.
The vote is five yes, three no, that is tabled until the next council meeting. That brings us to the reappointment to the DDA for Louis Hawkins.
Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
I move for the approval of two zero zero four three two, the reappointment of Louis Hawkins to the Downtown Development Authority.
There's a motion to approve, Mr. Griggs?
I second that.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion?
Madam President?
Madam-
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, through you to our staff or is Mr. Hawkins on the line?
I don't believe so.
You do or don't believe so?
He does, he is not.
Okay, does that not show a grand blank address?
It does.
It does. I would move the table that to the next council meeting. And, um, before I make that motion, do anybody know of any, um, qualifications or residency requirement for appointments in boards? But, you know, if you do speak now, I'm talking to anybody. If not, nobody saying nothing, I would move the table this- this as well as I did the other one until Monday.
Okay. So, are you making a motion and do you like to read- read the-
Well, I can hold up on the motion if it's something that you think is relevant and not fit anybody, so...
So, it says, "Members shall serve in the interest of the citizens of the City of Flint, except for compelling reasons stated prior to appointment, shall be residents of the city. In all cases, at least three-fourths of the members of all multiple-member bodies shall be residents of the City of Flint." That is six dash one oh one B, number five, on page fifty-eight of the council, um, the City of Flint Charter. So, the question is, Councilman Mays, how many people are on that board? And is three-fourths of them residents of the City of Flint? And then, once that's determined, then outside, I mean, if, you know, they can live anywhere.
Well, if I may, Madam Chair, um, before I move the table that, I think that when you read that, you must read that if they from outside the city, the request for appointment must be accompanied with a compelling reason. You can't skip over that compelling reason being brought forth before you get to the three-fourths. The only way, in some cases, from my interpretation, that they get to be outside appointments is their appointment come with a compelling reason. I don't know if the compelling reason for me would be because they've been on there and they got knowledge, but I didn't see a compelling reason. So, for two or three reasons, I move the table this until the next council meeting.
There's a motion to table until the next council meeting. Is there a second for that motion? Madam, um, Chair, I'll second that motion. It's been moved improperly seconded. That is, um, that motion is made with no discussion, roll call please. On the phone to the next council meeting.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one no.
The vote is seven yes, one no, to postpone that to the next council meeting. That brings us to the reappointment Downtown Development Authority for Lloyd Fletcher. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair? I move for the reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority, the Flint resident Lloyd Fletcher, number two zero zero four three three.
There's a motion to approve Resolution two zero zero four three three, reappointment of Lloyd Fletcher, Attorney Lloyd Fletcher, to the DDA Authority. Is there support for that motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Davis?
I second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Mays?
Through you to our staff or to whoever's listening, is Mr. Fletcher on the line?
No, he is not.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher, as I recall, also serves on the, uh, he chaired the Local Offices Compensation Commission. I know they got rules about how often and when they meet through you, Madam Chair, to the City Attorney. We don't know of any rules or anybody listening where this is the City Attorney. We can appointing people to multi, um, well, various multi-member bodies. Would that be a fair statement, Ms. Wheeler?
Not to more than one board?
Yeah.
Um, I'd have- I need to look to see, um... And I know this is in the boardy- this is a authority that's established, um, through state law, so, uh, I- I need to look at-
I don't think I'm wrong with it, I just wanna ask on the record.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm gonna give it to you right this second. I'm looking though. Yeah, I don't imagine the problem because he's- he's served in that, in both capacities, um, under, for many, many years, but except I- I am still looking forward to that information.
That because he was being reappointed, he been serving on the DDA as while he was chairman of the Local Office Compensation and, uh, as we see.
Right. Y'all said, Mr. Mays?
No, she said she- she was checking something out. We don't have committed meetings, Madam President. I'mma do committed meeting work the best I can under the five-minute rule, please. Thank you, I'm not done.
Thank you.
Madam President, through you to Ms. Wheeler. Did I hear you right, Ms. Wheeler, when I was speaking to the President? You said you were checking something out?
Well, yeah, I am, but I- I- I'm not finding it as fast as- as you need it, of course, so, you know...
Okay, well, I'll see whether I abstain or vote in favor of him. I have no problem with him, I know him. I just wanna dot my i's and cross my t's under this new charter and not knowing it and not having committed meetings to do the work.
So, Councilman- so, we're- Councilman Mays, are you gonna let everybody else and then come back to you while you look at it?
Oh, you can do that, yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, that's perfect. So, is there anyone else that has any discussion about Mr. Fletcher? Anyone else? Oh, okay, no one else, Councilman Mays. So, Attorney Wheeler, how you doing on that?
I- I don't have time for you.
And Attorney Wheeler, it seems like you gave- it seems like you discussed this multiple times, that there is no violation for someone to serve on more than one board.
Yeah, I don't really- I mean, I'm- I'm not saying that's not-
You're not sure, I'm sure you did. I'm sure we talked about that on multiple occasions, but, I mean-
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know if we talked about it on multiple occasions. I'm not gonna be characterized at that. She's already stated this is an authority versus a- I don't know if it's a multi-member body or not because we appoint, um, multi-member bodies and this might qualify under the definition. But I'mma stick with my question, whether you try to belittle it as multiple times. I think not.
So, um, so I'll have- I- I'd like to put in a request from our staff that by the next council meeting, which was the- the two prior to this one, that were postponed to the next council meeting, I would like a list of those that serve on the DDA board and their terms and- and their addresses so that we can see how many members are on there, so that we can see what the percentage is according to the charter, and then hear of any compelling reasons. Um, so, Janelle, do you and Davina have that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And so, I'm all set. If there's no one else, Councilman Mays, um, this is your- your second round?
No, I'm still on the first. You asked was would I allow Ms. Wheeler to continue to look and you come back to me. Don't trick me on the second round, this is the first. I- I- I gave you a courtesy and you asked for it publicly.
Councilman Mays, um, no, sir. But- but you're the only one that still wants to speak, and so, you can-
Ma'am, I'm just waiting for an answer. I'm not trying to speak, don't miscategorize what's going on here. She asked for courtesy and I think we should give her that, we should indulge her. You just got a, uh, certain way of trying to deal with me and you're not gonna be successful because I'm smarter than what you're trying to characterize me. We waiting on Ms. Wheeler, everybody knows that.
Councilman Mays, um, I am not trying to categorize you or anything. All I'm saying is, you are the only one left and that this doesn't denote two times.
Point of order.
You say a courtesy, I am- you- I will get your- what is your point of order?
You out order, point of order, when I say point of order, our talking should stop and you should ask what's my point?
What is your point of order?
I'm on the first round, based up on your conversation, not the second. Regardless of how many people want to speak.
How much time does he have on his first round?
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Fields?
I call the question.
There's a motion to call the question, is there support for that?
Point of order.
Madam Chair?
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
Two people can't have the floor at the same time. She would have to have the floor to call the question. I've got the floor, we're waiting politely on this Wheeler, y'all can't get around her.
One second, Ms. Fields. Ms- Ms- Ms. Attorney Wheeler, where- where- do you have the ability to find that tonight? 'Cause we can't allow Councilman Mays to wait for you to try and find something that he wants now. We're going to discuss this at Monday's meeting. How far are you from locating that document?
Unfar, there's a lot of sections I gotta look at, so, um-
It is, it is. And so, Councilman Mays, you can move on. We're not going to- I'm sorry, you can have your document-
Point of order. Point of order.
What is your point of order?
You don't dictate who get the floor and can ask anybody on staff a question. I done seen y'all take recesses and look. You're not gonna discriminate, let me finish my point of order. You can't discriminate because things ain't going the way you want. I've got the floor and we waiting on something. I've given courtesy.
Do you want me to read it to you and you are more than-
I'm- I'm reasonable enough to make a decision when Ms. Wheeler responds. Just, you know, you can't have everything your way because it don't go the way you want. If you was asking the question, you'd be-
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Ms. Fields?
Mr. Mays is being argumentative and disruptive. I believe he is out of order.
He is absolutely being argumentative and disruptive, and he is out of order. Mr. Mays, I will read it to you again, we will not wait for Ms. Wheeler. She has tried to answer your questions, and if you would like to move on with your last two minutes of your first round-
I would appeal the ruling of the Chair.
There's an appeal of the decision of the Chair on the floor, is there a second? There's an appeal of the decision of the Chair on the floor, is there a second? There's an appeal of the decision of the Chair on the floor, is there a second? The appeal dies for a lack of a second.
I have no problem using my last two minutes, but I'mma use them in this way. I'm suing this city for being discriminatory and this council. And I done- I got plenty of video that shows when Ms. Galloway wants a question answered, whether it's to Ms. Wheeler, Cryer Edwards, or whatever, we ain't never had this. The person looking for the answer, in this case, Ms. Wheeler, she can say when she's exhausted and then what's what. This council ain't having committee meetings. I don't have to get caught up in y'all mess and be a bad council person. I'mma be a detailed, good council person. I've watched Carrie Nelson, Jackie Poplar, Juan Twes Davis, Vicky Van Buren and the rest. And so, that's why I like putting you on display for one, Ms. Galloway, Ms. Fields and everybody else who acts discriminatory. I don't care if y'all try to rule me out of order 'cause I had the floor- I don't care if y'all try to rule me out of order, cause I had the floor and y'all wanted to get it to call for the question and Ms. Galloway jockeying, "Oh, Kate, you're right, um, yeah, he's being disruptive and disorderly." No, I was not. I don't care if Jerry Winfrey, Carter, Maurice Davis, or Mr. Winfrey don't second an appeal, that means nothing to me, I made it for the record. I was not being out of order, I had the floor. Ms. Galloway was interrupting, being out of order. That was something between me and Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Wheeler's smart enough to say, um, how long it would take her, can she not do it? Do she need more time? Did she look and ready to rule? That's how that go. And then, based on that, since I had the floor, I make a motion whether I wanna postpone, vote yes or no, in light of no committee meetings. So, I don't care if there's a silent council on when I appeal. I don't care if I run alone. I done ran alone before and seen five council people disappear and we'll try a new batch. The- the problem I got is Ms. Galloway trying to talk condescending and think that I'm a fool, and I ain't. You gonna end up looking stupid trying to rule me out of order when I had a floor and ain't saying nothing, waiting on Ms. Wheeler and-
So, that is Angela Wheeler, thank you. And so, Attorney Wheeler?
Yeah, I was gonna say, like I said, I- I tried to do a search of the entire charter and specifically the section of- of board appointments, and so, I- I did a- another limited search of more than one, and I did not see anything, um, so far that shows that you can't serve on more than one board. Um, like I said, I just did a- did a search tonight, um, I'm glad to do a little bit more and that tomorrow, but from what I found so far, I have not seen anything specifically so far that shows there's any prohibition, at least in the charter, from serving on more than one board.
Madam Chair?
Well, um, Councilwoman Fields?
All right, I believe Mr. Mays' time is up, I would like to call the questions.
There's a motion to call the question, is there support for that motion?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Worthing?
I support that.
It's been moved and properly supported, there is no discussion on call the question, roll call or call the question.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs? Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays? Mr. Mays?
I abstain for the reasons that the rec- clearly showed the shenanigans and the- and the interruptions and out of orderness of Ms. Fields and Ms. Galloway while I was waiting patiently for Ms., um, Wheeler to rule what she did. So, I would abstain for the discrimination and different treatment as I try to take care of the people's business of the City of Flint.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one abstention.
The vote is seven yes, one abstention, the call to question passes, that brings us to the motion that is before us to approve the reappointment for Mr. Fletcher, roll call please.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I abstain on this vote, based up on what I previously stated on the record about the shenanigans and the disorderly interruption of me when I have the floor waiting on an answer from Ms. Wheeler to try to do the business of the people of the City of Flint in light of this council majority vote, no committee meetings, I abstain for those reasons stated on this record.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one abstention.
The vote is seven yes, one abstention to approve that reappointment, that brings us to special order. The first special order is a special order for seventeen oh two Pinewood, special order by Councilman Mays, um, status is seventeen oh two Pinewood, including- including what is being proposed for that location, Councilman Mays.
Uh, when I requested this special order, I requested that somebody from Building Inspection, Chad and/or Mike Ryder be here. I don't know who remembered that request, was they communicated with, and is Suzanne Wilcox here as well? I requested certain folks to be here, um, are they here?
Uh, this is Suzanne, I am here.
Suzanne, what about Chad and/or Mike Ryder, did they get any communications of my request, do you know?
Um, Chad and Mike are not here, if you have questions, uh, related to building and safety inspections, I shouldn't be able to answer them.
Oh, yeah? Okay, well, we'll see, but when I request some specific people, I would like for this administration to supply them, is that a fair request, Ms., um, Wilcox?
Um, I'm the Department Head for Planning and Development, and I'm here representing Building and Safety Inspections.
So, Ms. Wilcox, it is with your position that you blocked me from getting to Chad and Mike Ryder? Is that your intent in the statement you just made to me? Well, let me ask you a specific question. When I request Mike Ryder and Chad, um, even though you're over that department, are you saying that I cannot get to them, I have to talk to you?
I'm saying I'm here on behalf of Planning and Development, representing Building and Safety Inspections tonight.
So, Ms., uh, Wilcox, do you believe that I'm lying when I said I requested those inspectors who have more specific knowledge than you? Do you have all the knowledge and license that they do?
I do not, I'm here representing-
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, let's try to get it straight. Yeah, believe me, I'll ask questions, but I'm gonna first lay a foundation in a special order I requested. When I request people with license and expertise, that's who I want, that's who I need. Ms. Wilcox, have you, um, and that department, Chad and Mike and them, had an opportunity to do an in-house inspection, have Ms. Sorenson agreed to that yet? Last we talked, you were saying that y'all were trying to arrange it, update me on that.
No, they have not had an opportunity yet to do an interior inspection, they have been working with Ms. Sorenson as recently as today. Um, they did issue a citation, um, on any interior renovations, but they have not yet gained access to the house. Ms. Sorenson, um, from what I understand, was on the phone with, uh, Mike today, and she is supposed to be coming down to pull permits and pay fines and costs tomorrow.
What do you mean they issued a citation for- did you say in-house renovations?
Um, it appears from review of photos that, um, we received, that there were some-
A window was put in. Interior, exterior, I know about the window.
Interior.
What about the window, the exterior, what we can see from the outside? Is that a renovation that you are concerned about as well?
Yes, it is.
And that has not been cited yet?
It was cited, um, there was a citation issued, yes.
For the exterior as well as the interior, you said there was a citation issued for the interior, what aspects of the interior got cited?
For any renovations that look- that appear to be completed without permits, and there were no permits pulled for windows or any interior renovations. So, the citation, um, was issued based upon those, um, renovations which include that window.
So, that mean you could- you haven't been inside, you don't know the details of those renovations, but you issued a citation in case there was some, and then you seen the outside window renovation and you included that in the citations as well, am I understanding that?
Correct, and it appears from the pictures that there were interior renovations outside of the window, the window was one piece, but it appears that there were some interior renovations, um, based upon exterior photos. So, based upon that review, that citation was issued.
And the citation only asked for si- um, fines, it doesn't or issue any cease and desist orders? Cause we don't wanna do double jeopardy, we don't wanna fine them two hundred or a hundred dollars and then they done got by on what the residence is complaining about. What is the extent of the penalty of the fines and or citations, can you tell me?
Essentially, the- the inspector, um, that- that's a court, um, is a court case, the inspector will go to court, and ultimately, um, the- the owner has to come into compliance with the ordinance, which means that if there was work done, um, on the interior and it's determined that, uh, via the court, then the owner has to, depending upon the extent of those renovations, the owner has to pull all proper permits, pay all fines associated with that, and depending upon the extent of the renovations, work may have to be removed so that, um, the inspectors can see the level of work that was completed on the house without pulling permits and without doing inspections.
Have you- can you issue any cease and desist orders, or can you request them through the court? I would believe you could.
It goes through the court.
But you have not, your department haven't requested any cease and desist orders? Or have they?
As far as we are aware, there is no- there is no interior work going on at this point, and that is, um, yet to be determined when, uh, when our inspector is able to gain access to the building, um, and that has not happened yet.
Suzanne, let me say this, it kinda puts you in a bind, in my opinion, and I got the right to have my opinion. You're citing a city planning commissioner who you rely on as a group to do certain things, that's kinda conflicting to me, that's why it's what makes this thing so funny. And I'm here to tell you, um, you know, I've been charged with crimes and I'm looking at prosecutor late now, I got a call from the state police, they wouldn't charge Mr. Murdoch, and we gonna work on that soon as I get back, but the point is, when you got a building inspector, or inspectors who won't show up on my request, and you issuing citations and don't know the extent, but you know some, and you ain't requesting a cease and desist order, and you got residents who's turning me on, turning you on, cause they been looking at these renovations, you got a zoning board of appeals department who's approving variance and don't know about this illegal activity, that some of my colleagues, uh, particularly, I don't know if Mr. Griggs was that concerned, cause I asked him to call a special meeting with me about it, and he told me right in front of the residents he would not, and that's his appointee. So, we made some headway. Now, this court date and these fines and no request for a cease and desist order, let me switch gears now and ask you this question. Doesn't the city council have an opportunity to change and amend zoning ordinances as it relates to land use? Specifically, in this case, if we wanted to amend the land use ordinance and put these type of homes in a multifamily zoning, would your opinion say we have the right to do that, yes or no?
Yes.
I know the answer, I know the answer would be yes, and if I'm not cutting you off, I wanna say this to Mr. Griggs. Mr. Griggs, I know you got a house operating as a business, but in A1 zoning or single family residential zoning, the ordinance says twenty-five percent or less of those homes can be used as a business, not fifty percent, not seventy-five percent, so forth and so on. Are you familiar with that ordinance, Ms. Wilcox?
Um, I am familiar with it, yes.
And so, we got a little conflict going. Um, Ms. Wilcox, how long would it take you for your department to work with legal and draft up an ordinance where these type of things, if the council approves, it can be in multifamily zoning versus r- single residential family zoning? How long you think it would take to draw up an ordinance for that nature?
Um, I would defer to the law department, um, for that, that they're the ones who draft ordinances, we would certainly work with them on that, but that is really a question for Angela Wheeler.
Do you, Madam President, to Ms. Wheeler, how long before we can get that type of ordinance movement, do you know?
Um, I- I don't know offhand, um, I mean, like I said, we need to- Suzanne's department and my department need to sit down and discuss it and see what all we need to put into it. So, we'll need to confer first, and then we can give you an ETA.
Well, I know I met with the residents on their invitation, and I've heard my council colleagues, particularly Mr. Griggs, say, "It's nothing the council can do, it's out of the council's hands, um, the state allows it." No, we regulate land use, and we can determine what goes in single family zoning type situations, and we can determine what goes in multifamily zoning type situations. I had an issue with this in the first ward. Let's go another step further, Ms. Wilcox, when the zoning board of appeals sent out those notices, do you know how many people they sent them out to and what they- who they were required to send them out to? Did they shortchange the residents, even though the zoning had to do with the variance for the porch? Um, was that proper, or did they miss sending notices to people? Do you know?
Um, the process, the process for sending out zoning notices is, um, a simple parcel, um, survey, so, it- depending upon what the ordinance requires, in this case, it was everyone within three hundred feet, um, so, there's a survey that is developed, it's strictly based upon the parcel level data that we have. I understand, because we pulled it recently, there were thirty-eight, I believe it's thirty-eight residents within three hundred feet of that house, and so, it's an automatic, um, mailing that goes out to all residents within three hundred feet of that house.
Do you have a record that all thirty-eight got that mailing?
I do not have a record of who that was sent to, but I know the process that was utilized by the then zoning administrator, um, and it has- the process has changed over the past several months to document exactly which residents get sent, but the- the, uh, the actual survey data that's pulled, that process has not changed. So, if four residents, if they can demonstrate that four residents received it, I would, um, I would almost guarantee that thirty-eight residents received it. It may have been discarded or thrown away or whatever, but I- I, based upon what I know about the process that was utilized, I- I would bet that all thirty-eight residents received it.
Well, I would request that from this period on, I don't wanna guess, or I don't wanna bet, I want those thirty-eight copies filed on file with the city clerk's office to keep her records, so that we can see. Now, if that's done, or if you have a record at the next council meeting, I'm gonna ask that this special order stay on, and I'm gonna ask that Mike Ryder or Chad with that expertise and license stuff that you say you don't have, that they be here, and that in- in your department, you help facilitate this. It'll be up to the council, you know, whether they do it- It'll be up to the council, you know, whether they do it first, second, or third, or do it at all. But that's my request through you, to one of them, and they can be at home. They can call in, and you, the department head, you can call them, if it's at seven, you seem to be here, and you could call them, it's no big heavy lifting to pick up the phone, people with expertise, because now I'm gonna ask that the legal department draft up a ordinance on land use that will move this stuff from single-family to multifamily, as we've discussed about here. I wanna introduce a draft ordinance and see if I can get that passed to help, um, these residents with their requests, while other council people think it ain't nothing the council can do. Uh, Madam President, in the sake of time, and with what we've learned here about these citations and violations, it's becoming real, what these people were telling me in the meetings I attended, I'm gonna ask that this, um, special order be tabled until the Monday council meeting that you talked about coming up, and I so moved.
You wanna, you wanna vote on it, or do you just want me to say okay to it?
Well, you know, I'm always courteous to my colleagues, but you know, everybody pressed for time. No committee needs work pile up, this been out there for a long time. I know those residences listening, I know Mr. Griggs, them is listening. I don't care if the residents talk, I don't care if Mr. Griggs talk, I've had, I've said what I had to say, and I'm believing these residents more and more about the allegations toward that property. And Ms. Sorensen, who is, um, Mr. Griggs pick, I'm thinking, Mr. Griggs don't understand the job that we can do as it re- as it relates to legislative body, not just him, some of my colleagues. So, I said what I had to say, and I made the motion, and so forth and so on, but I'll, 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 I'll wait on the motion if somebody got something they wanna say.
There's a motion on the floor to, there's a motion on the floor to table this until the next council.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order.
What's your point of order?
I've said if there's some colleagues that wanna say something, I don't know if Ms. Fields won't do, or she wanna second it, but I don't wanna lock us in when I say that.
Speaking for a second, I asked you a quick question, and you went on to say some things. You made a motion, and I was asking, cause council rules do not require a motion. And so, I asked you a simple question, I didn't interrupt you, and you went on and on and on and on. And so, there is a motion on the floor to postpone this to the next council meeting. Is there a second for that motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Winfrey.
I support the motion.
Is it moved and properly supported, that has no discussion. Roll call on the motion to table this until the next, as a special order to the next council meeting on Monday. Roll call, please.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, three no.
The vote is five yes, three no, that motion carries. That brings us to the next special order, which is, special order two zero zero four two three, special order neighborhood safety officer and blight, as requested by Ms. Winfrey, um, Carter. Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Madam, um, Chair. I, um, I wanted to, um, ask that the neighborhood safety officers come to council to, uh, discuss the, um, the ordinances that is related to blight. Um, for example, um, people parking on the lawn, and, um, I have a couple of issues here in the fifth ward that I, um, want the blight department to spe- to pay special attention to. And I just want them to, um, you know, talk to us about their responsibilities, and let's talk about enforcing, um, the ordinances. So, um, are there any blight officers on the, I mean, neighborhood safety officers on the line?
No, there are not.
So, so, um, what happened?
I don't know, they asked me questions, but they're, I, I, they're not on the line.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Well, Ms. Winfrey Carter has the floor. As soon as she says, "Ms. Winfrey Carter, when you're done, you say, 'I'm done,' and then I'll move on to the next council meeting."
Um, Janelle?
Yeah, let me see if I can find out why, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Um, point of information.
What's your point of information?
I, um, have to leave due to, uh, family obligation, um, but I will be back on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I sent a email, Ms. Carter, I'll have to let you know when they respond.
You know, you know, this is, I'm, I'm frustrated, because I think, I think, uh, Mr. Winfrey had it on our agenda, um, for a special order for blight, for the, uh, neighborhood safety officers, or, or the, the, you know, and, and I've had this on the agenda as a special order. Now, we need to, we need to discuss what's going on with the ordinances that the neighborhood safety officers are re- responsible for enforcing. Janelle, I would ask that you invite them to the council meeting for next, um, Monday, for Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'm, 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 I'm finished.
Madam President.
Thank you, wait one second, so Ms. Winfrey Carter, you want this, um, special order moved to the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. Mr. Mays?
Yeah. Yeah, Madam President, thank you. Uh, Ms. Winfrey Carter, thank you for putting this special order on our agenda, because blight is one of the top priorities with police, and these are the cars that I get. Councilman May, First Ward, police and blight. You got blight officers, I think the one in my ward seemed like his name, his name is Martin. Now, picture the First Ward, the geographical area, Copeland, jig-jag round Pearson Road to Dupont, Cryo Road to Saginaw, I, I see it, the geographical area. You got blight officers ticketing cars parked on people's yard, and I done asked them to bring me the ordinance, and they brought it to me, but we ain't had no legislative committee meetings. I wouldn't care if they parked on their yard. If you gonna enforce that until we change or amend the ordinance, and some of these cars be good cars running, you know. I don't know the rules about, can you park on the lot you just bought? We tried to get the land bank to leave the driveway, they took it out anyway, people bought the lot. But anyway, I would rather them call Murdoch and that crew, and say, "I see a mattress, a couch on Verdun in between Piper and Russell. Been there for months, I done called it in, I talked to Lindsay, we got tires between home, on Home Street, between Cryo Road and, um, Oxley. Ask Jeanette Edwards, Murdoch and Neely came to, they block club me, they trying to talk about me, and she say, "Hey, they said they do the tires, and the tire still there now. I know who put them tires there, Mr. Price. He was a good man, that's who they should have put on blight, Price. But anyway, my position is this. Ms. Winfrey Carter, I look forward to this special order, and I look forward, this council realizes, and they being disrespected repeatedly. Blight officers won't come, our greatest power is to inquire, ask questions, so we can operate government. Inspectors and stuff won't come, the mayor, he set the trend, he didn't come, and ain't came really to talk about government operations and state of emergency, wanna give an update. I already know the update of the city, I know where couches and blight is at in the first ward. I know what the neighbors saying, I know what I'm telling the block club, a council person can't give no order, they can't direct, they can inquire, they can do budgets, but they can't say, "Go pick up that blight, that's the administration, we give them money." This council, Ms. Winfrey Carter, voted six no and three yes to put almost a million dollars for blight. Not twenty million been squandered, cause Eric Scorsone ain't no appointee. He told them to spend twelve to fourteen million prematurely, and ain't nobody got no money from the state in the pandemic like we was getting it in the water crisis, cause you ain't got the right folks speaking. You got finance chairs and directors who holding two positions. I don't wanna get off on a tangent, but I remember that vote, six no for blight, six no for police, them the biggest two cars I get. So, you done hit a home run. I wouldn't care if you'd never second my appeal. I'm not talking about blight for you, I'm talking about it for the First Ward residents in my block clubs, Ms. Edwards, Sean Harrison, Ms. Spencer, and Nicole DeSac across from Vernon Chapel, that's who I'm talking about it for. I say, get a front-end load in some trucks. I seen some people lick it blight in my ward, I thought they was cleaning up, I come back, it's still there now. They could look at it. So, First Ward, we gonna get that blight, and they might wanna clean up Kate Fields' ward, Maurice Davis' ward, I'm a Democrat, I don't like Trump, I ain't voting for Trump. So, I wouldn't care.
What's your point of order? What's your point of order?
Mr. Mays is way off topic. Political affiliations of council members is not relevant to this special order on blight. I believe we've already discussed this, I think it's time to move on.
What is your point of order?
Point of order, his discussion about who has what political affiliations is not germane to the discussion on blight.
So, Councilwoman Fields, can you give me a council rule so that I can properly rule on your point of order?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but you have to, in discussion, stay germane to the topic. It's obvious that political affiliations are not germane to the topic of blight in this municipality.
Councilwoman Fields, I, I'm, I'm, I hear what you're saying, but as the chair, it's my responsibility to rule on the charter, either Robert's rule or our rule. And so, if you'll look that up, Councilwoman Mays, then, then we'll, then I'll rule on that. Councilwoman Mays, I'm asking that you would stay germane to what we're dealing with in this special order.
I am. When it come to Biden and Trump, Trump could have been and sent us some blight money. He could have sent us some blight money, but he didn't. I'm talking about blight and federal, state, and local funding, I got that right.
Councilwoman Mays, please now.
Yes, ma'am. Let me do this, let me do this, you see, she just interrupted me, you should have said that. You, she can't use point of order to take the flow, cause she, she might like a, a, a politician, I don't. I look at the flow of money.
Ms. Mays, please talking for a second, as the chair, I have the right to bring all council, anybody in the meeting into focus, and so we're not going to attack anybody. I want you to stick with where we are, even though there may not be anything specific in the rule, let's not make this a circus. Would you talk about the blight specifically in Flint, and no political affiliation, or what any of your colleagues are doing? And then, Councilwoman Mays, if you're not.
I ain't mentioned no colleague, I mentioned that federal funding, federal, federal funding and state funding can help local funding. I talked about finances, twenty-four million, and I'm talking about a six to no, a six no vote to move nine hundred thousand, almost a million to clean up blight. Just as I said, them same six voted for no police, these the two big areas. I'm talking blight, she just don't like where I go to get my money from. I try to get my money with the Democrats and Biden them, I ain't trying to get, Trump ain't gave me no money in four years for blight.
Councilwoman Mays, we're done with this, we are done. We are done.
You ain't, I ain't done with it, you might be, I ain't, but you can interrupt me, it's a special order, it ain't no rule, you out of order, but you know, you just mad, because I'm getting with Kate Fields and mess, and everybody else.
Councilwoman Mays, but this is.
Take your pardon.
If you're going to stick to the, I'm not gonna do this with you guys tonight.
Okay, let me do this with blight, let me do this with blight, and take thirty seconds and call it a day. Let's not bicker over real. I know and you know that them blight people should come up to this meeting at her request, just as them inspectors should come, and we shouldn't tolerate it. I know that Mr. Winfrey, Kate Fields, and others, they won't vote to subpoena people, but we wasting a lot of time begging people to come to these meetings. But when you start slanging them subpoenas, all that nonsense will stop. I yield a blow, y'all don't want me to be real, but I'm not gonna act like I ain't in no middle of no heavy politics, and people making commercials, and the news talking. I ain't studying Channel Twelve, Five, M Live, I'm a newsmaker. God bless you, God bless the citizens of the city of Flint, go Democrats.
Madam Chair.
Counsel, wait a minute, counsel, oh, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Fields.
I just wanna say that it's almost ten o'clock at night, we haven't even gotten to the, uh, master resolutions, and I am not here to Mister, listen to Mr. Mays talk off-topic indefinitely on whatever comes into his mind. If we can't keep this tightly to the agenda and on topic, I'm going to have to leave this meeting. I'll, I'll stay and see how this goes forward.
Thank you, Ms. Fields, we appreciate any time you give us to complete the business. So, this is what I wanna say, um, to my colleagues. Um, it is unacceptable for blight not to show up, but what I'm more concerned with, not just that, but I'm concerned with the fact that Mr. Murdoch won't show up at the request of the embus person, who is trying to investigate some different things. And so, if this council is not going to hold the blight department, which is under the leadership of Mr. Murdoch, who is under the leadership of Mayor Neely, then we need to reassess what we're going to do. And if the embus person cannot get a response from that department, what are we gonna do as a legislative body who has the authority to assist them in getting answers to the concerns of this community? And so, with that, I ha- I, I, yes, this can be on the next council meeting on Monday. That brings us to the last special order, which is a special order for the community development block grant, and that's Councilwoman Winfrey Carter to discuss whether the, uh, mayor is allowed to hold a contract for agencies that receive community development block grant minutes. Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, um, I think, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. I think I asked, and, um, Attorney Wheeler, I think I wanted to find out, I asked if you could give us a legal opinion. If not, I would like for you to give us a legal opinion. Um, because we voted on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Or it was presented on August seventh, two, two thousand nineteen, and we voted on August twelfth, I believe, um, to award several organizations the, um, CDBG grant, okay? I was told, we were told by Suzanne Wilcox that a couple of the organizations did not get their, um, their grant money. I found out that one of the couple of organizations did, um, get their grant money, but the second, um, organization did not get their grant money. And that organization happens to be McCree Theater. My question is, how is it that the mayor can not give them their money and the council has already approved the, um, grant money?
Yeah, um, Ms. Angela, I'd have to get more information on what happened, um, after that time. But yeah, I can, I can provide you a legal opinion.
Point of information. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Can I make the request that you not ask that that be a legal opinion, but that it be discussed in an open setting so that we don't have to worry about waiving privilege?
Well, let's, yeah. We can discuss it. Let's discuss it now. Let's discuss it. Because you know what? It's a disrespect. It's a disrespect. I have never known of a mayor to totally disregard what the council has approved. It's a disrespect. When we want to talk about disrespect, let's talk about it. And I'm opening it up to the, to, to my colleagues. Because.
Madam President.
Councilman Mays.
I'm, I'm done speaking for now. I'll save my time.
Yeah.
Madam President.
Councilman Mays and then Ms., Ms., um, Fields.
Yeah, normally I would say, you know, I would yield, but I'm not yielding because of the call for questions and the maneuvers. So I got the flow. I would like to say this. Now, this is my political opinion. This is my privileged political opinion because I'm a councilman. The voters of the first ward gave me a voice. Now, I'm gonna say this. This McCree Theater at one point, I don't know if it still is, but it was housed in the first ward. I got an interest. When we voted to give Big Brothers, Big Sisters money and McCree Theater, we knew what we were doing. And there are times when the administration, like they did with W T Stevenson and other folks, whether they black or white, they hold up their money, but politically, I know what I know, a hundred percent what I know. People who was associated close with the Weaver administration has been taunted and dealt with by Neely them. I even got beat up talking about it in roots. And I wish Prosecutor Layden was listening, cause Detective Reese told me. And he wants me to get a copy of his report. I'm the victim. Murd out the suspect. A jury can try it. I don't file false police reports. This administration has been messing with folks associated with the Weaver administration. You listen close to Kate Fields, she don't even scrutinize Neely.
Point of information.
What's your point of information, Ms. Fields?
Are you aware, Madam Chair, that Mr. Mays is doing the same thing, going off topic? Do I have to call a point of order?
Um, you can, you can call a, a point of order if you, if you, if you'd like. And so.
In point of order. Mr. Mays is way off topic again.
Mr. Mays, I'm asking you to be fair to the constituents and this community so we can get business done. Can you please stick to this grant block, block grant dollar?
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. And that's exactly what I'm doing and been doing. This money been held up politically. Cause Mr. Winfrey, who administers and works in an administrative capacity in the McCree Theater and Ms. Winfrey Carter, she just trying to be a good councilperson. Mr. Winfrey is probably finna be a county commissioner. I bet you. And so, politics, Ms. Fields, and political affiliation holds up grants and money that this council approved. I'm being real. And I'm telling the community and I'm telling my colleagues, we not stupid. We've talked, worked on this behind the scenes for months. Release that money. Get a McCree Theater their money. You know, we here talk, well, they got four hundred thousand in the arts millage. Yeah, I helped work on it to help pass it. I wanted them to. I want McCree Theater bursting and black folks and institutions to get money. And I wouldn't care if the Republicans endorse Neely. Give them people their money, man. That's what we say in this field. That ain't no point of order. That's point of political talk out in the open, in the open meeting. I don't have to be a behind the scene politician all my life. I went to school for politics, Michigan State. I'm germane. I don't want to say what I say, Tito. I'm helping her try to get this money broke loose. And she trying to be a good, um, councilperson. And you say, oh, she's fighting cause it's her dad. No, we fighting cause it's right. We voted for this. Neely holding it up. And I want them to know, I want the McCree Theater, and I ain't my daddy. He did. He was a pastor. This is a community. I wouldn't care if it's Pastor Flynn, Pastor Mays, Mr. Winfrey, Woodrow Stanley. I want the money released when we vote. You know the principle, Ms. Fields. When we reallocate block grant money, that's what means something. We got that right. So, I am germane. And Ms. Winfrey Carter, just like you, I reserve my time, but this is a special order. Ain't no time to reserve. God bless the citizens of the city of Flint and God bless the people I represent. I'm gonna fight for black, young, old, white, Hispanic, for what's right. I ain't studying what you talking about.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Winfrey?
Yep, uh.
Madam Chair, you're right.
I want to put this in the form of a, uh, of a, uh, point of information, and I gotta put it in a question form, and I, and I guess the only way that I can do it is to say.
You have the floor, Ms. Winfrey.
I'm sorry?
You have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, um, does my colleagues, uh, understand or realize that when Councilman Mays mentioned Mr. Winfrey, he's not talking about this Mr. Winfrey. He's talking about, uh, another Mr. Winfrey. Who I believe, uh, uh, is the person, who I know is the person who, uh, has not received, uh, the, the monies or the block grant that we, uh, that we approved. And he, uh, my colleague also mentioned that he would be a, uh, he is a county commissioner. He's talking about that same Winfrey. I just wanted to make sure that the public didn't, didn't confuse Councilman Winfrey with Commissioner Winfrey. And I wanted to make sure that the, uh, the community didn't confuse, uh, the, the, the director of, uh, McCree Theater, Winfrey, with Councilman Winfrey. Good man, but I just wanted to make sure that our identities are protected.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Were y'all done, Mr. Winfrey? I got you, Ms. Fields. You don't have to say.
Yes ma'am. Thank you. Yes ma'am.
Ms. Fields?
Yes. I am not sure what all contracts for agencies weren't completed under when council voted the last time on these block grant allocations. But I do have a question. I, I think there is an ethical consideration. Ms. Winfrey Carter is directly related to a, a mother and father who run the McCree Theater. Um, I'm not sure, but I believe they both receive salaries, uh, from that organization. I don't know if part of their salaries were intended to be paid out of this portion of block grant. But I would say that we need to actually go all the way back to when this vote was made. I wasn't really aware of these family connections, but I think there could possibly be a direct conflict of interest, uh, on Ms. Winfrey Carter even voting on this if it is going to benefit her family directly. Uh, I believe it violates the ethical standards of our city. And I think she should have recused herself to begin with. And I think this conversation, especially with the emphasis on the one contract that she's referencing, I think it's problematic. I think it's an ethical consideration. And I would like the, um, Angela Wheeler to weigh in on this. Number one, should Ms. Winfrey have recused herself on this vote because her, her family members were benefiting from the vote? And two, should we even be discussing this? Is that, could she be discussing this in terms of ethical considerations and conflict of interest?
Ms. Angela, um, let's see. So just looking at the ethics section, that's, um, one second. One dash, one dash six oh two, but let me just find the particular provision with regards to disclosures. So if someone, let me just read this to you, uh, and just make it a little bit more sense. This here, if approved by state law, any public servant who had a discharge of official duties would require to take an oath, official action or make an official decision that would substantially affect the public servant's financial interest or those of associated business or immediate, um, family member has to find this charter, must take the following action. So the action really includes, um, preparing a written statement describing the matter or action or decision um, for the potential conflict of interest. Uh, deliver a copy of that statement to, well, official statement to the employee's immediate supervisor, if any. And if an elected official or appointment, deliver a copy to the city clerk. So, um, and if there's insufficient time to do so, then orally inform the official body, um, of service or the committee of the potential conflict. So, and let me just see what the definition is for immediate family in this particular definition. I just, so, so we can be clear on what that is. Okay. Yeah, so this here, an immediate family defined by the charter means a person who is living in the same household or related to the public servant as a spouse or as any of the following, whether by marriage or blood or adoption. So a parent, child, brother, sister, uncle, aunt. Just gonna read it till I'm, I'm, I'm clear, I'm, so I'm being, so I'm reading fully everything. Aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, first cousin, grandparent, grandchild, father-in-law, mother-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, stepfather, stepmother, stepson, stepdaughter, stepbrother, stepsister, half-brother, half-sister, brother-in-law or sister-in-law. So, um, just based on this reading, and it, it looks like it, it just requires a, um, it requires a disclosure of a potential conflict.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to read on to see what else it said here. Um, and since there are sometimes principles of the superior must assign the matter possible to another employee, well, that's for employees. Um, oh wait a minute, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm missing a page here. One second. Oh, it says that there's no immediate super, superior, the, the public servant must abstain if possible from influence over action or decision, decision in question. If the person is a member of city council, um, if the person, if the public servant is a member of the city council, council is excused from taking part in the action or decision in question. Um, if the.
Point of, point of information. Attorney Wheeler, where are you reading from?
One dash six oh two, um, under section. On pages twenty, on pages twelve and pages thirteen under disclosures. D. A D or David.
Point of information, from the charter?
Yes, from the charter.
Point of information. Point of information.
But what's your point of information?
Do, um, Kate Fields, do you realize that we are discussing whether or not the mayor is allowed to hold up contracts for agencies that receive community block grants? It has nothing to do, you know what? This has to do with the principle. I would be fighting if, um, if, if other agencies, uh, monies were held up.
Madam Chair, I have point of order. I have the floor.
You don't have the floor. One second, Ms. Well, she's doing it right now. What, you finished your point of information. Is that correct, Ms.?
I'm, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. So go ahead. Um, Attorney Wheeler was finishing and, and so she did a point of information, Ms. Fields.
Yes, I was just, I was just going through the specific point, um, as far as a disclosure being made. Um, if the person is able to be excused from taking part in the vote, but the office says in, in sub D, in sub, after D in sub C, it says if a public servant is a member of the council, council per, council person is excused from taking part in the action or decision in question. The public servant is not permitted or is otherwise unable to abstain from an action in connection with the matter. Public servant must follow, describe the potential conflict and the action taken, uh, with the city clerk. So if you're able to abstain, then, you know, still you should make the disclosure and, 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 um, abstain. abstain, but if you're not able to abstain, then, um, file a statement describing the potential conflict and the action taken with, with the court.
And you're, and you're, Attorney Wheeler, as you're reading these, because this is a lot to digest. And so you started out and said where if the person was related to someone, where was that at?
Um, that's in D, that's in the, oh, let me go back to it. Page twelve, it's in the first section, D one.
So it says, uh, and, 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 and I want to, so point of information. It says make an official decision that would substantially affect the public servant's financial interests or those associated business or immediate family. Is that correct, you're reading from there, right?
I'm reading from the disclosures section, subsection D.
But you started with.
I started with the first section, D one.
D one, but it says in there substantially affect the public servant. Okay, I just want to make sure, okay, go ahead.
That's all I have, I mean, like I said, you, 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 if, i- i- if you, if you know this goes for all council members, if you, if you know that someone in all those different categories that are enumerated based on the definition of the ordinance, then you have to first disclose. And I think I've only had this happen once in the council so far. I, I don't know if, um, if you all have the same memory that I do, but I remember, um, Councilman Davis, uh, um, had to do a disclosure when the, when this first a- arose, this new charter. Um, it was, uh, based on, um, um, Miss Beverly, um, uh, an appointment to, I think, the historic official commission, so he made the disclosure and then he abstained. I, that's, that was my memory of it and, you know, just thinking of one, well, this is, like, this needs to be done, and then he didn't vote on that one.
Thank you. So Ms., Ms., um.
Right. Yes, I still have the floor. All right, well, first of all, I guess I would like to make a referral, um, uh, to the council office in the minutes, that they could tell us whether, when we voted on those block grants that included the McCree Theater, whether Ms. Winfrey Carter made a disclosure and/or if she abstained from the vote. And from my understanding, and we all interpret sometimes what, what we hear as a legal interpretation, we're not always clear on it, but from what I'm hearing, um, I believe that it's a conflict of interest, uh, for e- even this discussion to try to influence. Now, I do understand the distinction that the principle of the thing was what Ms. Winfrey Carter started out with. And I think we all are well aware of where reprogram money comes from. It's because different organizations, for one reason or another, normally don't fit some criteria, so they end up never getting a contract. So even though the money has been awarded, and I don't know if that is the situation with the McCree Theater, I don't really know what the situation is. I don't know what the org- other organizations are. But Ms. Winfrey Carter herself, the only organization she specified and talked about was the McCree Theater. And her parents, I do believe, both received a salary from the McCree Theater. So I think it is definitely a conflict of interest for, uh, her to have even voted on that and now to be discussing it. So, um, I think we should move on. And if we have to ask for a legal opinion, actually, on that vote and whatever that happened in the past, we can do that, but I think it's pretty clear.
What's your point of information?
Uh, uh, does my colleague realize that, uh, the McCree Theater was not the only agency that Councilwoman Winfrey, uh, mentioned?
Are you aware of that, Ms. Fields?
No, I actually only heard her mention that one. Um, but I would be interested to know what other organizations did not receive contracts and why. Um, you know, I'm aware from other conversations that Reverend Flynn's organization never signed contracts or never could finalize the documentation needed to sign contracts on block grant, and I think that money had to be reprogrammed. So I think each organization might have its own separate set of, um, issues. So, you know, if there is a list of them, um, I would make a referral then to, um, planning and development for those listed organizations that have been awarded a grant but have not received them, and for planning and development to come forward and to, um, I guess, uh, defend why they haven't had signed contracts. But I, I think, uh, Ms. Winfrey Carter is really on shaky ground here trying to push this issue.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Great, Councilman Mays, I'd like to speak because I have not spoken. Um, it's gonna be interesting when we go back to that, um, vote, but what we are talking about today has nothing to do with what Ms. Fields is talking about. The reality is, I spoke with the mayor personally, and there isn't an issue. He was looking at the situation that went on with COVID. And one of the things that I shared with him is COVID had nothing to do with it. That money was assigned to them back in August of two thousand nineteen. Ms. Winfrey Carter didn't bring it up. I brought it up originally, along with some of my other colleagues. And one of the other ones that didn't receive their funds, Ms. Fields, was Big Brother's Big Sister. And they didn't receive their funds until June or July of this year. And part of the reason why they probably, in my opinion, received the funds is because there would have been enough council people that would have stood strong for them. And I, and I say that because I believe that Mr. Guerra went through that program. So he wouldn't have been one that would have voted to block their money any longer. And so I am going to be interested in that. The other piece of that is, if I'm not mistaken, um, our attorney was there. I don't know anybody that doesn't know that, um, Ms. Winfrey Carter is related to, uh, Mr. Winfrey. And so for it to be raised today to say that she would be responsible in saying that, why would anyone, regardless of whether, it's unfortunate because she didn't say anything for a long time. And so it's gonna be interesting for my colleagues to turn this into an ethical issue. And I'm gonna be interested in finding out what the word substantially means, because if I'm not mistaken, that block grant dollar was only for like forty thousand dollars or something like that, because we moved money from it. So it is, um, gonna be, um, interesting. And it's interesting that my colleague is raising so many ethical concerns. So I look forward to that discussion as well. And so with that, Councilman Mays.
Madam President.
I'm asking that we move on, uh, do our master resolution and, and be out of here. Go ahead, Councilman Mays.
I look forward to the master resolution. I also look forward to the council discussions. I also look forward to, if you want a recess and come back tomorrow, it ain't nothing but a phone call and we got business. Let me say this, when you look at the council body and the majority, and it might not fit the technical aspect of the charter, but guess who is the judge of the charter? I know Mr. Davis know of the relationship, of course, Mr. Herb Winfrey know of the relationship, Monica Galloway know, I believe, and I know. And that's the majority with Ms. Winfrey Carter. Now, technically, I go back, don't just look for the minutes to see if she voted. Look to see if any of us, including her, with the acknowledgement in the audio and video, Ms. Fields, do your homework. I'm not sending the legal department to do it because I, it was devolved. You can't just look at the minutes, you gotta see if it was devolved to the body, I hear. I'm not gonna get into that with Angela that y'all wouldn't let me get into and I just watch y'all do the exercise of reading out loud, going through it. That's all I wanted to do earlier, y'all discriminate. But my point is this, don't you worry and don't you fret, um, Ms. Winfrey Carter, because they ain't answered why Kate Fields sent out that illegal memo yet. I filed that before she put this up on you. That's why I tell this council, y'all gotta take these investigations seriously. I subpoena Kate Fields on why she sent that confidential memo from the legal department to Field Schultz, Abby Ellis. Abby Ellis, the one who turned me on because she did the documentary, America Divided, something in the water. Don't vote for him, read this.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Once again, Mr. Mays, Mr. Mays is totally off topic on some rant that I don't think anyone's interested in.
Ethical concerns, Ms. Fields, you opened up the door to talk about ethical concerns. And so Mr. Mays is talking about ethical concerns in his opinion.
I appeal your ruling.
There is an appeal of the decision of the chair on the floor, is there support for that appeal? Is there support for that appeal, Mr. Greif?
I support.
There is, there is a, a appeal that has been done, there is a support for it. As the chair, I am telling my colleagues why I'm ruling the way that I am. Ms. Fields raised ethical concerns. She raised that someone is unethical and that, and had the attorney deal with it. And so Councilman Mays is sharing what he believes to be unethical. And so that door was open, that was not a part of what this, uh, special order was, but Ms. Fields went on and on and on, and no one said anything about it. And so now Mr. Mays is talking about what he believes to be unethical, illegal email. And so that is my ruling, is there any discussion from this council on the appeal?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fields?
You are confusing things. The entire topic of ethics wasn't opened. The ethics was addressed in reference to the actual topic of the special order. So your logic leaves much to be desired here. And Mr. Mays is lengthening these meetings unnecessarily by continually going off on his own little political or personal grudge rants. It's not, his rants are not referencing the actual topic of the special order, and I do not believe he is on topic, he's not being germane, and you are allowing him to do that, and you are allowing to, this meeting to go unnecessarily. So I will be voting against your ruling.
Thank you, is there anyone else?
Madam President.
Welcome, ladies.
Madam President, I'm gonna use all the political I got to try to make sure that Kate Fields ain't voted president, because she attacked Ms. Winfrey Carter ethically when the subject matter was a grant.
Ms., Ms. Fields, what, we're in a appeal, ma'am, so.
You're correct, you're correct, Madam Chair.
Yeah, what is your point of order?
There is no point of order while there's an appeal on the.
Thank you.
Even, even though he was off topic yet again, I understand that.
Yes, thank you, go ahead, Mr. Mays.
My allegation that you gotta have clean hands. You can't be the pot dog in the kettle black. And I know in an open meeting, when you make certain allegations of unethical conduct of a fellow, or even of a woman colleague, that's serious. But I want the public to know you unethical. And you gonna attack off topic, did nobody say nothing about germane? You could have waited, and so you did open that door. And I want the public to know you unethical first. I might be unethical third, but the paperwork is filed on you. The charge has been made, and here you wanna come at everybody. Any dirt you can find, a bank you can find. We know, and you can't just check the minutes and see if she voted. You got to check the record, was there any discussion of who her daddy was openly in the, to that body? And then if she violated, it come before council, but it shouldn't come before council before yours. And yours been out there a long time. So Ms. Winfrey Carter, relax, you got a long wait because Kate Fields is in line first. This starter is jacked up, jacked up. And I'm gonna make you pay attention by using it on you like you trying to use it on us. Yeah, I said us, you cannot be the president.
You all said, Mr. Mays?
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm building a puzzle, it's a serious business. People's livelihood is at stake. This lady'll try to take her own colleague's head off on some minor infractions like they major in a public meeting, and I'm a ru- I'm a vote with the chair. You opened it up, you just constantly do stuff. Gave me the finger, said I'm a racist, I say I'm an Eric Ma- you Eric Masons. You cut it out, Ms. Fields, you cut it out.
Thank you.
Just go for bad, you go for bad.
Is there anyone else that would like to discuss this?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, you know, Ms. Fields, you got your nerves, okay, to talk about somebody being unethical. When I received an email before I even got sworn in telling me not to vote for Councilman Mays as president, now I thought that was very unethical. In fact, you set the tone of ethics on the council. Okay, so let's not talk about being unethical. And yes, Charles Winfrey is my father, and I am proud that Charles Winfrey is my father. And I will fight for Charles Winfrey and everybody else and every organization that did not receive their grant. I'm gonna fight for them. Now you take that. And I will be focused to support the chair on this, uh, appeal.
Thank you, is there anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else hearing none? So, and I just want to read also into the record, under the ethics section of the charter, six de- one dash six oh two, under number seven, use his or her official position in violation of applicable law to improperly influence a decision of the mayor, city council members, clerks, appointees or employ- employees. So I would say that to, um, influence the decision of the council vote on who would be president with the emails would definitely fit. And so I ruled the way that I ruled because this was talking about, she turned it into an ethics discussion. And because she didn't like what was being discussed, that's why I ruled the way that I did. And so with that being said, there will be a roll call, she has appealed the decision of the chair. For those that vote yes, you support the chair. For those that vote no, you support her appeal. It takes five for her to win her appeal, roll call please. Mr. Greggs?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
All is four yes, three no. The vote is four yes, three no, the appeal of the King Field. Councilman Mays, will you go ahead and wrap up, sir?
Yeah, let me wrap up real quick. It's gonna be very, very important that we put this city on the right track. Quit chasing these petty rainbows. They not gonna come true. Focus on the big picture of the city. Focus on the people that we serve. In this instance, the people who we serve is in a nonprofit organization, and they got a grant held up. Everybody with influence should be asking the polite question, why won't you release their money, man? Is Suzanne Wilcox on the line still?
I am. I'm still here.
Suzanne, what is the technical holdups if you know of why this money haven't went to the McCree Theater?
Uh, I believe it's been signed by the mayor, and they have their, I believe it's been signed by the mayor, and they have their contract now.
And so, what do that mean, the contract out? Have the McCree Theater signed it, executed, and they waiting on the city to execute something?
Um, as far as I understand, um, I think they've had their contract review conference with our staff person, and I believe their contract is in their hands, and I will verify that. But I, it has been signed.
Is Mr. Edwards on the line? I mean, do it look like it's moving forward, Suzanne? What's going on? Technically, do we need to ask that the, that you and the mayor, um, Mr. Edwards, whose hands is it in? I mean, you administer this stuff regularly. Have you seen one held up this long?
Are you, are you speaking to me?
Is that directed to me or to the other group?
Yeah, anybody, anybody. We all cool. We good. You ain't gonna get muted. Hop in there. Well, I can't say you won't get muted. I'm not the chair. They mute me. Go ahead.
Mr. Mays?
Yes, ma, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There, there were, there were only issues in terms of, uh, the mayor's full understanding and support. Now, what I would pose to you as a part of this, and, and, uh, I know you guys have had a substantial debate, and, uh...
Yeah, look what it done turned into allegations of, uh...
I'm not, yeah, that's what I mean. I'm not trying to go down that direction.
Yeah, I ain't down with that. Let's talk about the details of this.
What I would say to you, what I would say to you is, by your own, by your own discussion, the contractor, the, the approval was in August. We did have contracts that were signed prior to our arrival. So, what the question you might want, what the question you might wanna ask is, how did those two contracts?
Now, let's just ask about this one that's been laying there. And, um, Suzanne don't wanna say it, but it's in the mayor's office. Let's talk about what is the holdup. Oh, that's the only one we's talking about.
Those are the only two. The only one, that, the only two, and the one you're talking about right now has been signed. That's what, that's what Suzanne is, uh, providing you. But our whole debate has been...
You saying, you saying it have been signed?
That, that's what she just...
Yes, that's what I, that's what I said.
So, what's the holdup on the release of the money if everything's been signed? Have everything been signed?
Nobody has said there was a holdup on the money.
We saying it. Ms. Winfrey Carter's saying it.
No, the holdup, you spoke about...
I'm saying it.
In the signing. The signing was what everybody's been referencing. That was the argument of this.
So, now that's been done recently?
Ma, Mayor Neely has signed it. I'm gonna repeat again. Mayor Neely has signed it. Since you guys have kept saying Mayor Neely hadn't signed it, I'm going to...
Okay, so, did that happen recently? It's good news if it happened. Did it just happen recently?
That's very good news. We can, we can be on one accord about it. That's very good news.
Okay, well, if it's been signed, how long do it take to release the money?
I'm gonna acquiesce to finance or acquiesce to, uh, something.
Okay, acquiesce. Let's acquiesce to whoever can say, tell me, how long it's been signed? And how long of a gap between the signing and the money? Now, if it was signed recently, then my question is, how long do it take to get the first or any release of the money? Anybody know?
I do. This is Suzanne. Um, I believe the contract is in the hands of the contractor. There's a process that we go through once the contract is signed by the mayor. It's called a, a contract review conference. I believe that's been held. That happens between our staff and the director, in this case, Charles Winfrey. And once that's done, then the contract is released to the contractor. And as you know, in terms of the release of funds, that happens, it's a reimbursement process. So, as they expend dollars and submit payment requests, they get reimbursed for funds expended on an ongoing basis. It is not an automatic release of all funds, and that is the case for every, every CDBG contract we administer. They're reimbursement process.
And that sounds, that sounds good. But all I'm gonna say is, if that stuff had have been in place, I can imagine as long as it's laid there, between two or one administration, it doesn't matter to me. That mean, if I was living my real life, I was struggling and couldn't get reimbursed. Now that everything is in place, okay, I might can do some reimbursements, but they ain't the same as the ones already done. Ain't no retroactive reimbursement, is it? That's, that would be unlawful.
I believe the, I'd have to look at the date of the contract. I don't know that offhand.
Well, that's how I think. Remember, I used to be the finance chair. At one point, I had rank, and people took that from me for whatever reason. But my point is this, I've enjoyed the conversation. These people don't wanna delay, belabor. We done learned something. I'm gonna take folk at their word. I talked to Mr. Winfrey, whether I talked to him directly or through, um, Ms. Winfrey Carter. My position is that we not gonna try to screw each other around. And I'm not referring to you, Mr. Edwards, and, um, Ms. Wilcox. I'm referring to my colleague. Just cut it out. Thank you for your conversation. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Briggs?
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, I believe you were incorrect about the forty thousand a year. I believe it's four hundred and twelve thousand a year, uh, times ten years. So, that'd be...
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Do the speaker, do you, to the speaker, Mr. Briggs, do you realize you quoting the exact amount of numbers for the arts millage? We talking about a CDB block grant, two different things. You realize that?
I was going by an In Live article. I believe it's four hundred and twelve thousand a year for the McCree Theater plus vehicle comps.
Mr. Briggs, are you aware that that is the millage money? We're talking about the allocation of block grant dollars, and that's not what we're talking about tonight. Are you aware of that?
Are you saying this, so, so what you said is, it's only for forty thousand dollars a year?
It was only for one, one request, Mr. Briggs.
Yeah, but you previously said forty thousand a year.
No, I didn't say forty thousand. I said we, I said we gave them forty thousand, not a year, Mr. Briggs. So, we're not talking about the same thing. Is there anything else from anyone else? Hearing none, that moves us on to the special order for the liquor stores. Mr. Briggs?
Yes, I think everybody's got the draft in front of them, the draft ordinance, uh, about closing stores that sell alcohol at nine, uh, every night. Uh, the only thing that I'm, I'm not real sure about, you know, uh, say, an all-night drugstore or an all-night gas station that's in the Flint city limits, uh, it might be better to just close the operation at nine o'clock during the pandemic. I'm not talking about a permanent ordinance here. I'm talking through the pandemic, which, who knows? It may go for another year or so. But, uh, that's kind of the, what the ordinance is about. Uh, I would trust everybody on council has read this draft ordinance, and they can make comments. Uh, I know I worked with Mr. Milhouse and, uh, with a lady over in Lansing at the Liquor Commission on this. And that's kind of what we've come up with. So, I'm, I'm leaving it up to you all for discussion. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you for endorsing, Madam Chair. That wouldn't be sufficient for me and my ward, period, actually, the city of Flint. We wanna shut them down permanently at nine o'clock, period, after the pandemic or whatever. We're tired of the nuisance and the crime that's in this community. It's time for it to cease. Because when you go into other residential neighborhoods such as Grand Blank or Wasselo Clough, them stores is closed for the evening. And like on Sunday, some of them do close more often on Sunday, and it's more peaceful, a different environment Sunday evening. Residents is frustrated, and they're tired. We wanna shut them down at nine o'clock. Whatever you need to do in a liquor store, and the, the liquor stores need to be held accountable for their violations of lottery and different other things of that nature. We had that discussion. But not according to the pandemic, they need to close permanently at nine P M. Now, give them time to go back to the outskirts or wherever they come from, safely home. Because they don't live, it's clear that they don't live in this community the way them stores looking. And I'm tired of it, and the residents are frustrated all over the city of Flint, permanently at nine P M, not according to a pandemic. Thank you for endorsing, Madam Chair.
Madam President?
Mr., Mr. Winfrey?
Okay, I, I agree with my, my colleague. You know, I'm, I'm pro-business, but I'm even more pro-community. And if we had a critical mass of, of convenience stores operating within the city limits that were partners with the citizens of Flint and this, 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 uh, city, the city as a whole, then they would be concerned about the activity that goes in, on, in and around their businesses. But they're not. And so, I'm not interested in, 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 uh, in shutting them down for, uh, just, just for a pandemic. I'm, I'm interested in shutting them down at a certain hour permanently, as my colleague stated, because it is absolutely, and I don't know, outrageous for any businessperson to think that they could come into this community and do what they will, and leave out, and take those resources, and then just leave us with, with, with the, uh, uh, folks that create problems once they've gone in and bought their liquor or whatever. And they're not being good, community-minded people. And, and, and here's a challenge that I would be willing to, to issue to my, my colleagues, and that is, anybody within the other eight wards that's willing to sit down and have a, a meeting with all of those businesses, those, uh, uh, what they call them, uh, corner stores, or convenience stores, or whatever they wanna call them, with those, uh, businesses, to talk to them about what we want and what our community wants and deserves, I'm willing to have that meeting. But still, they ju, they shouldn't just be able to come in and just operate all hours, and, uh, they're not policing their, their properties, and they're not watching what they sell. We really have some problems in this city with, with, uh, with, uh, single sale of cigarettes, you know? And, uh, so, so, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a way that this county, this county, this council can protect our citizens. And I think one way is to, one, shut it down at a certain time permanently. Two, let's talk to the businesses owners and talk to them and let them know, we're not anti-business, but we want them to be a good partner. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam President.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I was next, Madam Chair.
Yes, please. Mr. Briggs, you've already spoken once. And so, who hasn't spoken once?
I have not.
Madam Chair.
Mr. May, well, Mr. Mays and then Ms. Fields.
Thank you, Madam President, um, for that acknowledgement. I've listened to the reports about this proposed ordinance. I've seen the media pick up on it. But I want my colleagues, the citizens of Flint, and the media to pick up on what I'm finna say. So far, I've heard from three of my colleagues. Mr. Winfrey. And Mr. Winfrey, I do agree with you, because I'm in partnership with some store owners in my area. And they were in partnership with the previous administration under Police Chief Tim Johnson and Weaver. Remember, we talked cameras. We also put a, I put a proposal in the budget to put more police...
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Could Mr. Mays define in partnership with?
Yeah, I can define it. I know him. For example, Zahir Ashaf, Zuzu, corner of Pearson Road and Dupont. You might see me in there when it's election time. I might be getting petitions to run for office. Been knowing him for fifteen or twenty years. I knew him when he owned the store on the corner of what used to be, I think, Third and University Park. University Park bought him out because they didn't want no liquor store over there across from that gas station. So, I can define it. Let's go to Pearson Road and, um, Martin Luther King, corner liquor store. Some Indians got it now. And somebody broke in and come through their roof and took money. My partnership with them, I go in there, I can catch a chat. I done called police when somebody was shooting, and I had to run behind the counter. I know the people in my area, Ms. Fields. Don't get smart with me. Can you define partnership? You think black folks is crooks? We are in partnerships. I'm the councilman. I'm in partnership with pastors, store owners, know the gas station people, and I'm gonna have a serious conversation about that tax base. You ever looked at the taxes they pay? Remember, you was in the group that voted no to put more police. My partnership with them tells me, and I can bring them in to testify, that if you close them at nine, patrol their property, because people will break through the roof, you better check to see if it'll get them boarded up. You close them at nine and mess with their profit margin, their small businesses, gas stations, stores. Now, we got boarded up places. When people hang out in my ward, store owners call the police, they can't get no police. Y'all voted no. The vote was six no, three yes to put police on the street. You just did a survey, a thousand calls. That's two percent of the calls. The other ninety-eight percent is in the community. Bad people need to go to church. They gonna fuss, cuss, beat folk up in roofs and stores and gas stations, and store owners want police response? You right, Mr. Winfrey, protect and serve. Do you know what happens when a patrol officer come take a complaint? It go to the detective bureau. Y'all had twenty-four million dollars, all of the three that I'm here and say shut them down. Voted no to put police on the street. Police can go to stores and break people up. They agreed to put them things in the window, no lottery, and then the police could just come without asking them. Ain't no police. You should put police on the street to break up stores, answer nine-one-one calls. People shouldn't have to wait in a city our size, three, four hours for police. Now, everybody wanna get creative. Why not shut them down at seven? You shut them down at nine, and somebody get killed on the side street at eight. That ain't the solution. You better watch if you gonna hurt that tax base. You gonna have to watch if you got people coming off of sixty-nine and messing with our revenue base, coming off sixty-nine in the highway. Please. In the pandemic, Mr. Briggs, stores and gas stations were essential businesses. People ain't just buying liquor. They buy bread, milk. Some of them ain't even got cars. Well, yeah, they could shop before nine. Well, let's check on the businesses' tax base, Mr. Winfrey. Sure, some of them will meet with you. Will it be a hundred... Will it be a hundred percent? I'll meet with you on that, too. But you don't just move hastily, 'cause it ain't no police answering calls from store owners, residents. That's where the issue at. Y'all voted no for blight and police. And I gotta remind you that. I gotta get the media to ask me my opinion, 'cause it's different from y'all's. Now, I'm just telling you. I've been waiting to chime in on this. I got a voice. Y'all voted no for six or seven cars per shift. Additionally, two years in a row. You know who you are, council people. And then you gonna try to fool the public and say, shut both down, 'cause people lottering and won't clean up the blight at their store. Them the two issues, y'all voted six to three. Winfrey Carter, Mayes, and Galloway voted to do the right thing. We didn't have to get creative yet. All we want is police to break up stuff at stores, to arrest crooks, bad people. We need patrol and detective, and then you can have a safe city. You close a store at nine, why don't you close the roofs? I got beat up there. Close it at nine. I'm gonna be an advocate for common sense. I want a common sense approach first. And y'all control the purse strings. Y'all done let this administration squander twenty-four million. Might not could put police on the street, not listening to Eric Sciasone, who ain't an appointee. But you talking about ethics, Miss Finance Chair. Let's talk about the charter, the law, the big bulk of it. Appointees all in our banking accounts, squandering twenty-four million. We can't put police on the street. Now we gotta resort to close them down at nine. Talking, shut them down. I'm a Democrat. I'm for the working man. I'm for small business. Let's look at this. Let's keep this on the next council agenda for discussion, and I so move.
There's a motion to keep this on the agenda for our next council meeting. Is there any support for that?
Madam President.
Mr. Winfrey.
I support that motion.
Is your move not supported? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Councilwoman Fields. Thank you. Um, I wanna talk about the actual resolution, the draft that was presented to us. First of all, the actual resolution does not mention, specify only during the pandemic.
Point of order. Point of order, point of order. There's a motion to postpone this to the next council meeting, Miss Fields.
No, point of order.
What's the, what, point of order? What's, what's your point of order?
My motion was to move it to next council meeting. I didn't necessarily use the word postpone, but if I need to withdraw it to give people time to talk, I withdraw it.
Well, you, well, you made a motion to move it to the next council meeting. So, the discussion that should be happening now is whether or not you're supporting moving it to council meeting on Monday.
Madam Chair, let me understand this. So, you're saying that what I'm trying to discuss is not relevant to that motion? Now, I'm not being germane?
I'm saying, the motion on the floor is to move this to the next council meeting. Usually, the discussion is around whether you are going to support moving it or not. If you want to discuss it more, you can ask your colleague to withdraw his motion, and then you can discuss and talk about what you think it's saying, because that's different from where we are now.
Well, it's really interesting to me, your, your fine hair, uh, observation of what is or isn't relevant at this moment. I will talk about the postponement. I don't think it should be postponed. I don't mind continuing the discussion, but can you clarify for me whether this is a motion to postpone or to continue it? I'm not clear on what this motion is.
The motion that was made by Councilman Mayes is to forward this on to the council meeting on Monday. So...
Okay. So, you're effectively trying to stop my discussion of the motion while everyone else has had an opportunity to weigh in.
You are in violation of council rule that says if you don't cease talking, you shall be removed. The point of order is, I'm not coming to stop you from anything. There is a motion on the floor. You know as well as anything, it's almost like I move further question. And so, if you would like your colleague to remove his motion, he said he would, Miss Fields, let's not go on and on and on about this. Do you want him to remove his motion?
He can do as he wishes.
Madam President.
Councilman Mayes.
I moved to withdraw the motion.
There's a motion to withdraw his motion. Is there support for that?
Madam President.
Mr. Winfrey.
I support the motion to withdraw.
It's been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion to withdraw the motion? If not, roll call, please, on withdrawing the motion. Mr. Mayes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Miss Fields?
Yeah.
Mr. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no. The vote is seven yes, zero no. Miss Fields, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a couple of things that I think are very pertinent before we have, move on and have additional discussion at another meeting. Number one, it is not clear in the draft ordinance that has been presented to us for discussion, uh, it does not say only during the pandemic. You know, it's across the board, as an ordinance that would be ongoing in effect, uh, always until it was repealed. So, uh, that is muddying the waters here. Also, I'm not clear on the ability, and I would like to ask an attorney, and I believe Mr. Milhouse wrote this, but if he's not available, I would ask, uh, Attorney Wheeler. I believe we can limit the hours of liquor sales, but I'm not sure if we could limit the hours that a business may stay open. For example, a gas station. Can, can we legally tell a gas station what hours they may or may not be open? Or can we only limit the hours they may sell alcohol?
Yeah, I think this had more to do with the alcohol, but, uh, this particular ordinance, or, and like I said, this is a draft, and so, so this was not, like, this was, just so you know, it wasn't submitted to the entire council. It was submitted to Councilman Griggs, because Attorney Milhouse is working with Councilman Griggs. So, this was just the initial draft. Um, we don't even have an assigned chapter to it yet. Okay? So, I just want you to know, like, that we were just getting started on this. However, I did send it to council staff, um, just in fairness to everyone, since it's being discussed tonight, to make sure that it's disseminated to everyone to take a look at. But like I said, this is in its infancy, um, although we are working quickly on it. Um, so, like I said, I need to, to double-check that. That just have to do really with, related to the liquor sales, because that was the point of it. But I believe this one was mirrored off of two, um, one was off of the City of Growth Point Farm, and the other was, uh, some information found from Wisconsin's, um, um, alcohol beverage and tobacco law retailer. So, we, we looked at a couple of different areas, but the City of Growth Point, um, Farms was one that we looked at specifically. So, we'll, I'll get an answer on that to see if we can also encompass this gas stations, and if it also had gas stations in the Growth Point Farms one.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we, we need clarification on whether it's even legal to pass an ordinance, this ordinance has written, okay? And whether, in fact, this is the intent. You know, is the intent to close these stores and these, um, you know, every, in the ordinance that talks about liquor stores, convenience stores, gas stations, et cetera. But is it the intent to close their, all of their business, or only to limit their alcohol sales? And also, I wanna say, in terms of how these stores operate, now, it is state law that, um, no one is allowed to have an open intoxicant outside the store. And part of the problem, and I think the complaints that the neighbors in various parts of the city have, is that these liquor stores are doing nothing to prevent people from just, basically, they're actually bringing chairs and couches, and they're having, making little living rooms out of the parking lots of some of these places, and they're, they have open liquor that they're drinking. Now, it is up to the city police to police that, but I don't know our capacity to police that across the city. But it is our responsibility to, to make sure that these state laws are followed. But in terms of working with these stores, I think there's certainly more that they could do to not allow people to bring couches and chairs and set up, uh, you know, mini-parties outside the store, drinking and partying, and that's where I think the neighbors are objecting, and I think that's where these altercations are happening. It's not a quick in and out of the store, it's because they're loitering in the parking lots, creating problems. So, I, if we could limit the sale of liquor, I would certainly support that. But I think we need to be a little clearer on the parameters of what we do or do not have in this ordinance, um, before we try to move something like this for first reading. That's all.
Thank you, thank you. And I'm gonna ask you about one second. Oh, Mr., is that you and Mr. Winfrey? Was that Mr. Winfrey?
It's Councilman Davis.
Okay, Councilman Da- well, Councilman Davis, you've spoken once, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I haven't. I, I haven't. I just wanted to say one thing. Um, I'm sure we are all very passionate about this. It is eleven oh five. We know for a fact that this was only a discussion, that we were not gonna take action tonight. I am asking my colleagues to allow us to move this to the next council meeting, and to move the master resolution, and to approve or separate anything that you don't agree with to the next council meeting, which is on Monday, five days away. And so, in the interest of time, can we, can we all agree to do that? It's eleven oh five. I think that we can make a decision on whether we're going to deal with these resolutions tonight or at Monday's council meeting. In like ten minutes, there are many that need to get off, that have, that are staying out of courtesy. And so...
Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, I, I just, it won't take me fifteen seconds. Uh, you know, I don't need any attacks, but, you know, all other eight council people could have easily done the same thing. I just threw it out there for discussion, and if you, if you wanna shut them down, all you gotta do is sign the draft ordinance and be done. So, stop attacking me. Thank you.
Mr. Griggs, I, I wanna thank you on behalf of, of just m- m- me taking the initiative. This was a beginning, starting point for the conversation, and so, that's why we have committees, but we don't. And so, thank you for what you've done, and I think that you've done a great job in starting the conversation, and, and I will read it over, over the weekend. And so, if there's nothing further, um, I, I move that this would be added to the, um, council meeting on Monday, and then that we, uh, move on. So, that brings us to licenses.
Madam President.
Uh, point of order, point of order.
What's your point of order, Mr. Davis?
What was my place in my special order, ma'am?
Oh, didn't you, I thought you already spoke.
No, I only had one time. I had a special order just like Griggs did.
Well, actually, you, you had-
But I'm gonna move it over to Monday. I could do that. But I wanna say this.
Mr. Mayes, I, I mean, Councilman Davis, I want you to calm down. One second. Originally, you said that your special order would be included in his.
And I didn't say nothing.
Okay, you, you, you did. You, you spoke and said, this is not gonna work for my ward. We want-
Start meeting, share better. The recording has started.
Resolution for including the add-
Let me- Davina?
Muted.
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that? And, and just for the reference-
I would move the master resolutions for, for approval, including the add-on.
There's a master resolution, um, approval of the master resolution, Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, I second that.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Davina and Janelle, what is the add-on resolution that Councilman Mayes is speaking of?
Well, we put that under ordinances. It's an emergency ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Oh, then, I don't have to do that. I would amend, if I may, I'll amend the motion just to approve the master resolution.
There's an amended motion to approve the master resolution. Is there a second to that?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Griggs?
I'll second that.
Is the move improperly seconded? Is there any separation?
Madam Chair, this is Janelle.
Janelle, I mean, Ms. Janelle, um, you wanted us to, um, separate which or, which one?
The first one.
Okay, so we'll separate that one. The, um, the setting the public hearing, okay. Is there any other separation? Any other separation?
Madam President.
Councilman-
Go ahead. Go ahead, and you got some separations. I'll wait. Go ahead.
I just have two separations. I'd like to separate two zero zero four two five.
What is it? Define it.
Um, the setting of Flint Water Case.
Okay.
And so, 'cause, yes, and so, is there any further?
Any other separations you got?
Yes, no, I don't. Uh-uh.
Okay, well, it's a couple of separations that I had on there. How many resolutions is?
Fifteen.
Okay, and, um, can you go over wh- to read what there is? I don't have my agenda.
Councilman Mayes, I can't, I won't do that. I'm sorry. That's true.
Okay, but will you hesitate till I pull this agenda up on my phone? And so, I can't mute when I'm pulling it up. I can work through the agenda, but I can't pull it up when I'm muting and I'm muting and getting the floor. So, I'm gonna ask for your indulgence. I'm gonna pull up the city council agenda, and I'll tell you exactly what I'm gonna separate. The public need to know what we both known anyway, Madam Chair, but I'll do that as well.
Councilman Mayes, the, the agenda was put on the, um, website for a meeting.
It might be, I'm just asking you to indulge me while I, my slow phone pull up the agenda so I can take care of the people's business. Will you indulge me?
It's eleven eleven.
It is. You want me to make a motion to recess until five-thirty tomorrow? Or you pull this up? If I can make the motion to recess, if that's keeping a problem?
That's Councilman Mayes.
I didn't make no mo- I say, do you want me to?
Councilman Mayes, I just wanna move on. We are all-
Okay, and I just wanna pull up my agenda right quick. I got it up. It's, it's up. Let me now get the resolutions, please. I mean, you got to indulge us somewhat, the public and resolution resolving, um, the vision- I mean, you got to indulge us somewhat, the public and resolution resolving, um, the vision. Okay, I want to separate, um, okay, that's the one been separated on the strategic plan. Let me do this in discussion. Them change order number twos for them lawn cutting, um, services. Who is on the line that can deal with that? Anybody know if them change orders and that extra money? Um, one of them is saying amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand. I think both of them said that. Cryed anybody on the line? What is we doing on them change order for extra money for- for the lawn cutting?
Point of order. Point of order.
Mr. Point of Order.
Madam Chair, Mr. Mays is trying to engage in discussion or dialogue in separation. We don't normally do that. You just either separate them or you don't.
That's not true, Councilwoman Fields. This is the time where you can have discussion or separation.
This session is no longer being recorded.
So, we have to just cease talking, you guys.
The recording has started.
Thank you. Ms. Fields, this is the time where if you want to have dialogue because you're not going to separate, this is the time for it. If you're going to separate, then you separate and you don't talk about the separation.
I don't believe that's correct. You don't-
That's the way we always do it, Ms. Fields.
You just separate or not separate, and then, under the motion, then you have discussion.
Ms. Fields, that's what we've been doing it this way the whole time that we've been on council.
Well, I disagree, but you're gonna do whatever you're gonna do.
I'm not. I'm doing what we have consistently been doing. And so, Mr. Mays, you- you wanted the staff to come on and Janelle-
On that particular one, yeah. I see what I'm gonna separate now, but on that particular one, I wasn't planning on separating it, but I wanted to hear some, you know.
'Cause we're in five minutes. Janelle and Davina are timing.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, in them five minutes, I'm gonna do a couple of separations. Now, while we waiting on the staff, if anybody can answer why them- what's happening with them contracts for the grass cutting, that's the right of way.
Mr. Mays?
That cry- go ahead, cry.
Yes. Yeah, these are- these are, um, additional funds, as far as I understand. These are additional funds to complete the- the grass cutting aspects of this year. These were funds that, um, have been requested, uh, by that department, uh, to be able to continue to mowing and complete the mowing.
Yeah, if they- if they gonna do a good job, just like if they're betw- on Home Street, between Oxley and, um, and- 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 and Cryer Road, where them tires ain't been moved yet, then I'm all for it. But I'm just saying, when they put them bids in, somebody misbid, know the grass growing too fast. When it come to change orders and budget amendments, you know, we supposed to watch them hundred thousands turning into millions. And last I knew, it was a four to six million projected, um, you know, fund balance, way under the fifteen percent. But at the same time, I'm steady seeing budget amendments. Miss Galloway, I want to separate the one that deal with the lease for Brennan Center, and I want to separate the one that deal with the water meters. You need the numbers on. The Brennan Center, when, um, park thing is two zero zero four one six, and the one dealing with the water meters is, uh, two zero zero four one four. Miss Edwards, if you want to respond, fine. If you want to remain silent, fine.
Well, well, I- what- what exactly would you like to know? I mean, in terms of which-
No, I'm just, uh, wondering if you watching it, because, uh, if they doing a good job and really need the extension or if they underbid, then, you know, I want to look at it. And then finally, Miss Galloway, I'm gonna separate two zero zero four one eight and two zero zero, um, four two one.
Is that missing?
Did I- let's say, four- did I say four one eight and four two one?
You did.
And you separated the four two five? Is that right?
That is right.
Okay, I'm good.
That makes the master-
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Edwards.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
That makes the master resolution two zero zero four zero eight, two zero zero four zero nine, two zero zero four one zero, two zero zero four eleven, two zero zero four twelve, two zero zero four one three, two zero zero four one five, two zero zero four one seven, and two zero zero four two nine. Is that what you have, Davina and Janelle?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing and roll call on the master resolution.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no.
Vote is seven yes, zero no to approve the master resolution. That brings us to the first separation, which is two zero zero four two six. I separated that because the staff says the date needs to change. What does the date need to read, staff?
If you could just put blanks in it or just- just amend it, and we'll put blanks in it because we have to figure out when we can get it published.
So, can someone make it- so, do we need to do an amendment to make it a two zero zero four two six point one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can I have a motion for that?
Madam President.
Councilman Winfrey?
I move that we make two zero zero four twenty-six a four, uh, two zero zero four two six point one.
Based on the recommendation and suggestion of-
Based on the recommendation of our- of our support staff.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
The support is motion.
Ms. Fields has supported that motion. Is there any further discussion on it changing?
Yeah, Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, although I thought I got wrongly put out of the last meeting, I continued to listen, and this reminds me of a public hearing where a motion was made to approve some council recommendations before we had public input. Now, through you to, um, Janelle, Ms. Johnson, you want these to be blanks because of what? I'm wondering if we should drop it and wait till it get ready to really be said and had, um, you know. I know it's hurting deadlines, but you want this to be blank. What do you anticipate gonna go in them blanks? Time rise. I'm trying to see you to drop and start over. Go ahead. I'm listening.
Well, this is just to set a public hearing, and you can't- it didn't go on the last agenda, so we need to just put blanks in there so that you could say, "Yes, we're gonna set a public hearing, and we will put the dates of the hearing in after we've published the notice in the Flint Journal."
See, I'd rather vote on setting a public hearing specifically. I'm trying to say, see, if we vote on setting a public hearing without voting on setting the dates, I don't- I don't know about that. Have we done that before? Well, I mean, is that a good practice?
Yes, sir. We have them do it on Oprah's and all of the other, um, resolutions that ask for a public hearing because the journal doesn't publish every day now, and we're not always sure when we can get it in and have enough time for the public to know before that public hearing. So, if we put blanks in there, then we can, you know, we have a little leeway.
So, I would feel more comfortable if we said, "Do all things necessary and put them blanks." But if we adopt the resolution rev- resolving a blank, I- I'm gonna listen, but I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this one, Janelle. I mean, I'm one of them do all things necessary type of guys, and I'm one of them dot the i's and cross the t's. But I don't want to really vote on it. And it's adopting a resolution or an amendment to do the blanks. If you put the, uh, do all things necessary, including that timing, I'm okay with that. That's all I'm gonna say.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fields?
I- I- I want to support the motion as it is because, uh, I don't want to go back. We already can't get through all the work that we need to be doing in any reasonable amount of time, so there's no reason to do all this work over again. This is a technique we've used often in order to just meet the tech- technicality of being able to publish notice in time, to be able to put the appropriate dates in a publication. So, I say we just vote for the point one as suggested.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing and roll call, please.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
I'm abstaining. I'm not comfortable with it.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, one no, one abstain.
Vote is five yes, one no, one abstention. The, um-
Madam Chair?
Amendment passes. Councilwoman Fields?
I'd like to move for approval, two zero zero four two six point one.
There's a motion to approve, two zero zero four two six point one. Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion?
Madam President.
Council Win- Winfrey?
I support the motion.
Been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to vote no. I had kind of suggested a way I thought to do it. And so, now that it's going through this way, I'll be voting no. I won't abstain.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and roll call on approval.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, one no.
That brings us to two zero zero four one four.
On the board. On the board. Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Call the vote. Repeat what she said for the record. The vote was.
I'm sorry, was I on mute? So, the vote was five yes, one no, one abstention. So, it passes.
No. No. The vote was six yes, one no.
Six yes, one no. Thank you. I guess I was on mute. I'm sorry, you guys. Six yes, one no, it passes. That brings us to two zero zero four one four. Councilman Mays, separation of the water meter.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, through you to Mr. Edwards.
Point of order. Councilman Mays, there has to be a motion on the floor before you can discuss it.
I didn't know that because, uh, that's why we separated. We don't- well, okay, I'm gonna- I'm gonna- I'm gonna move to postpone it then, because I ain't gonna make it before I get mine from-
There's a motion to postpone, two zero zero four one four. Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? That motion dies for a lack of support. Is there a motion for two zero zero four one four?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Griggs?
Sound moved.
There's some- there's a motion to approve, two zero zero four one four. Is there a sup- is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? That motion dies for a lack. So, I- Davina, what happens when there's no motion to postpone and there's mo- no motion to approve? Does it just drop?
Madam President.
Wait, wait a minute, Councilman Mays. Davina?
Davina is- is not here at the moment, and I'm not really sure what happens.
Madam President.
This is Davina.
Davina, I hear Davina. One second, Councilman Mays. I will get you. Davina?
Um, I think we've had this happen recently, and I think, um, but I will defer to the attorney as well. But I think, um, it died kind of, and you had to bring it back. Okay? It's in the last-
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
Those are not the only two motions can be made. I don't know why we fishing down that stream when a live sitting councilman trying to get the, uh, floor up, because them ain't the only two motions. My point of order is that you acting like those are the only two motions and won't give the floor where we can proceed with the business.
I'm not, Councilman Mays. I was asking the, um, record keepers. But you can go ahead and tell me what you'd like to do, Councilman Mays.
Well, thank you. I was voted to be a sitting council person. You- I would, you know, really, we- we grown. And I ain't trying to be funny, but before we go to all of them opinions, let's just continue to conduct the meeting. It was a motion made to post- to, um, postpone, I think, a motion made to approve. And you got motions to deny. You got motions to table, so I'm gonna move to table until after the last separation.
Wait a minute. So, wait a minute. Attorney Wheeler, I want to ask the question. Councilman Mays is making a motion, and so, but it's, uh, if it actually is dead, his motion is mute. And so, Councilman Mays, where are you seeing in the council rule that allows you to do what you're saying?
Let me ask you this question. The motion that I first made was what?
To postpone it.
Until when?
Regardless, it- it died to next meeting.
No, it makes a difference. You can postpone to the next meeting. You can postpone to after the last separation. Those are different motions. This motion is to postpone to after the last separation.
You know what? There's a motion to table it until after the last, um, the- the last item. Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
Yeah, I'll support that motion.
Has been moved and properly supported. There is no discussion on a set time. Roll call, please.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no.
Vote is seven yes, zero no. That brings us to the next separation, two zero zero four one six. Councilman Mays?
Okay, is that the- that's one dealing with what? What is the title? You said the number. Beg your pardon.
Seven year use agreement, City of Flint, Brennan- Seven year use agreement, City of Flint, Brennan Park, and Food Bank of Eastern Michigan.
Okay, through you, I would move the, um, to approve that.
There's a motion to approve, two zero zero four one six. Is there support for that motion?
Madam President?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Winfrey?
I support the motion.
It's been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Mays and Ms. Field.
I'm gonna yield to her first.
Ms. Field, go ahead.
I just wanna say, I don't know what the point of separating it was, which lengthens the meeting. It's now eleven thirty at night. I don't think people can think clearly. I think this meeting has gone on too long because we've allowed too much dialogue that wasn't to remain earlier in the meeting. Uh, and unfortunately, I'm going to leave the meeting at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. So, so there's a motion, Mr. Mays. You have the floor.
Yeah, through you, uh, Madam President. Through you, Madam President, to Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, I read this as an extension of an already existing agreement. Would that be a fair statement?
I believe that's correct, but I would acquiesce to, um, the attorney, uh, to Angela. She.
Well, my next question, um, my next question is gonna be the physical aspect of the park or the park that's being extended. Yeah, it said something about parking. Is it a parking, um, you know, blacktop type thing there? I'm kinda familiar with it, but what is being extended? Because you couldn't sell the park unless you gotta vote of the people. So, you saying this agreement is, um, just the use of it? And it includes, um, a parking lot that's been blacktoped, that's, that's part of the park? If that's what's being said?
Yeah, I, from my, and, and, and I, like I said, Angela can jump in. But I've been there before, and yes, that, the parking lot is backs, backs up to the grass line of Brennan. So, I guess the parking lot was built on Gren- Brennan's property, uh, what was Brennan's property. So, that, that would be my understanding of it.
Yeah, that's what it seemed like when I read it. And I ain't got no objections to standing in the way, but I still want to speak about that on record to try to make sure I'm getting a clear understanding of what's being asked here. Is that, so you said Angela, but if you think you know, I'm, you know, about ready to vote. But I just wanna clear something up in my mind on the record. Because I remember back in the day, even before the other administration, when they was talking about this and they were negotiating that park land. And this is an extension. And, um, this is how many years? Seven years?
Um, Angela from me. Um, yeah, it, it is for seven years. Um, and this is a contract that, it, that extends the previous contract that was, that began in August of two thousand twelve. And so, it recently expired, um, but it hasn't been expired for that long. Uh, Food Bank has been a good partner of the city. And, um, like I said, all they, they used the parking lot, but they also do upgrades to the, to the park. So, they, this is a great benefit for the city and a great partnership.
Yeah, I thought that that, um, upkeep of the park had something to do with it. But Angela, is that parking lot blacktop as part of the park property that we both known? Do you know?
No, I do not.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Galloway, do you know?
Uh, Councilman Mays, um, I thought it was just an extension. I, I thought that that was. That because that's where the parking is. And so, that's what I assumed. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no.
The vote is six yes, zero no. That brings us to two zero zero four one eight. The final project plan, authorized project representative, the water treatment distribution plan.
That's Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
The reason I separated that, through you, Madam President, to Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, it identified Rob Benzek on there as, as a vacant position. Is he gone?
He is indeed, sir, as of September twenty first.
Okay, so, all those people named in that document, if he was still here, would that still be necessary? To have that many of them?
Yes, 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 that, that, that is correct. Yes, it should've been that way in the first place. Uh, but yeah, you, you have, you have too many projects of such a high value that it rests only with a single sign. And so, this changes that. You have multiple signers. Any one of these people are capable, uh, and would be authorized. Of course, we would keep it to the highest levels of leadership to do it. But I'm just saying to you, this, this provided some room. It should never, uh, just like a checking account or anything else. You should never have only one person who's the primary authorized signer, because anything can happen.
Well, you got that in the finance department. You got, um, Amanda as the deputy, I mean, as the treasurer. And you got her as the chief financial officer. And I'm not sure what Eric Scorsoni do. So, it shouldn't nev- you're right, it should never happen, not in the organizational structure you referring to. Are you telling me that Rob Benzek had been a single sign? Are you telling me Rob Benzek had been a single signer? Now, it's gonna be all of these different people who can sign and?
He was the pri- he was the primary authorized signer. And as far as I can tell from records, uh, that yes, he was the one authorizing, uh, dispersments and, 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 uh, project reimbursements and all that stuff. Yes, he was the one.
So, are you, am I, am I understanding now that, am I understanding now that any one of these people can do that? It does, doesn't take these multiple people. Any one of the people can do that? Is that what you're telling me now?
Yeah, that's correct. You're absolutely one hundred percent correct.
Now, who is the highest level person in this bunch? Is it you or the mayor?
It would be the, it would be the mayor. But, uh, much of the, much of the operational activity and authorization has, uh, fallen with me.
So, when you say at the highest levels, you would probably be signing most of this stuff. But is somebody else in here, if you ain't available, you saying that they can sign? And that's what you're asking us to approve?
Yes.
And the law give y'all the option to have one or multiple ones?
I, I would act, it, it is a contractual agreement. And you're authorizing, I guess, when you say the law, uh, in this case, you are the law. And so, you're authorizing these designated people legally to be authorized to sign contracts, to authorize payment.
Now, do I wanna do that? Because I'll be giving up my authority to know when these contracts is being signed.
You, this is how it's all, I mean, this is the actual functional way, uh, administration is responsible for signing a contract. That's all the, that's, that is the way it's built. You, you guys are approving, uh, it's the, the modality to move to con- to contractual agreements. But the contract is always signed by, uh, the administration.
Right, but then we approve contracts as well. These contracts is for what specific activity that you said never should've been one person? What is the activity for the record?
These are all the water projects. The, the, um, secondary water source, the Dort reservoir, the, uh, chemical feed building, the Cedar reservoir, Cedar pumping station, Dort pumping station. These are all those projects that you guys already.
Why would you, why, yeah, we did approve them. But why wouldn't we wanna look at these specific contracts?
The contracts are already signed. All, all of these thi- well, I, I, I take that back. I'm sorry, I'm staying corrected. I'm sorry about that. Uh, most of these contracts have already been, uh, implemented, signed and implemented. There are some still pending, um, but you already, the, the, the contracts themselves, uh, for the other projects will be coming before you. For instance, the Cedar, the Cedar pumping station and, and Cedar reservoir have not gone out for bid and for engineering at this point. So, those.
I'm trying to be courteous to, I'm trying to be courteous to my colleagues as well as to the general public. But like I say, I'm gonna keep popping no committee meetings, and they want me to vote on these major things with no committee meetings. I'll listen to my colleagues. But at this point, Mr. Edwards, unless they indulge me in more conversation, I might abstain. I, I mean, I ain't tripping about it. But I mean, you gotta do committee work and get questions answered. And before people start saying, well, it's late, we gotta rush through this. Haste make waste, and you dealing with more than that, millions of dollars, if you understand me. I need to know the mechanics of governmental operation. We got governmental operation committee. We got finance. And this council ain't been functioning. Um, anything else you wanna tell me?
No, this is just, uh, as I said, this is just to give authorization for us to continue what we already been doing, but to have appropriate people in place to sign off.
So, have we moved on Rob Benzek's replacement? He had some licenses and stuff that you had to really have in there, don't you?
Councilman Mays, your time has expired. Point of order. And I have been subtracting the time that you've been speaking to Mr. Edwards. So, you can wrap up your last question.
I don't want no favors under them cockamamie rules. I don't, I'm gonna start keeping my own time. I would just wrap up by saying, I hope that the time was split up between me and Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on the approval of two zero zero four two one.
There's no motion on the table, Madam Chair.
There. Uh, that's, that's four zero, that's, uh, four one eight. Four one eight is what we were discussing.
Four one eight?
Yes, ma'am.
There's no, there's no motion on the floor?
No.
How did, how did that happen? Okay. So, is there a motion? What's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
There was a motion on the floor.
I think there was a motion on the floor, but.
That's why I had a five minute limit. If there was no motion then, you know, I thought I made motion and, um, who seconded, heard.
And heard seconded. Mr. Winfrey, did you second it?
I sure did.
Thank you. And so, it was.
I'm sorry, that was two zero, that was two zero zero four one six. There was never a motion made on two zero zero four one eight.
We did, Janelle. That's what I'm saying. Mr. Mr. Mays did, which was unusual. He made it. And then Mr. Winfrey seconded. And then we started discussion, which is why I started recording. And so, if you would like to hear them say it again? Mr. Mays, can you, I mean, we're not gonna start.
I would so move, I would so move.
And then, is there a second for that?
Madam, Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
I support the motion.
It's been moved and properly supported. So, is there anyone else that would like to speak on that? Hearing none. Roll call on the approval.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I would abstain because under these rules, can't discuss it, can't vet it properly, no committee meetings. I abstain for those reasons.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, one abstention.
Then, five yes, one abstention, the motion carries. That brings us to fours, two zero zero four two one, authorization, water project, pollution plan.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve that.
There's a motion to approve. Is there support for that motion?
Madam President?
Councilman Winfrey?
I support the motion.
It's been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Mays?
Through you to Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, is this a similar type of thing?
Yes, sir, uh, just for the, uh, for the water pollution control. Uh, it's six projects there that, uh, we.
Now, Mr. Edwards, you, you can take this any way you want. But when I give up authorization to certain folks to run the city, I don't like them. You know, I, I understand that. I'm a politician. And you got somebody with higher authority than you, namely, Mr. Neely signing off. And I ain't comfortable with all them sign offs on them accretive and other sign offs and the picking up of blight in the first ward and politics and all of that. So, I'll probably abstain again because I'm reluctant when folks don't come. And when they do come, they wanna give me an update on the city that I already know very well. I don't call people for updates and tell me not to speak in my special order and colleagues join in. I call them up for governmental operations. I'm the, the film, the still guy, still talking about the, the, the Eric Scorsoni contract. I'm still that same guy that believe that charter appointees should not be department heads driving trucks. That's a department head. If you over department, that requires council approval. Appointees don't drive city vehicles. I have not seen that in years. So, I'm that guy. And I ain't gonna give up authorization. I'm abstaining. And I ain't gonna use my whole five minutes talking about it. But believe me, I'm used to folks respectfully disagreeing with me. I ain't used to folks fighting me physically and beating me up. I'm old. I ain't the guy I used to be. I'm wiser. And I ain't gonna authorize folks who, in my opinion, cheats in elections and win by just a little bit and don't wanna talk about things. Y'all need to get up here in the middle of the emergency, 'cause I'm not gonna do my legislative job, not me, and give up all authority. So, you'll probably get this authorization. I don't quite know all about it. We ain't got committee meetings. That ain't your fault. But y'all got a lot to do with folk you work for who think they can politic a seasoned politician in governmental operations. You might can get them other ones. And I'm not that much. You don't take it personally. It's charter, it's business. But y'all administration is politicking the heck out of some of my colleagues. Thank you so much.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on the approval.
Mr. Mays?
Abstain because I haven't properly vetted it. We don't have committee meetings, and these cockamamie five minute rules don't do it for me. I gotta vote on major policy and money, so I abstain for those reasons.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, one abstention.
The vote is five yes, one abstention. That leads us to the last separation, which is two zero zero four two five. Um, that was my separation. It was for settlement, Flint Water Case, Attorney Wheeler.
Yeah, I, I think.
Can we postpone that to the, go ahead?
I was asked that that be dropped, and we'll just bring it back later.
Okay. So, do we have to vote to drop it, or can we drop it, Janelle?
Oh, you should probably vote.
Okay, so there's, can, can I have the motion to drop? Okay, so there's- can- can I have the motion to drop?
Madam President?
Councilman Winfrey?
I move that we drop two zero zero four two five till such time that is appropriate for us to, uh, dispense with it.
There's a motion to drop. Is there support for that? Is there support for that?
Madam, um, President?
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter?
I support that motion.
There's a motion to drop. It's been properly motioned and supported. Is there any discussion on a drop?
Yeah, Madam President.
Ms. Mayes?
Yeah, this is the water crisis settlement motion to drop. And if it is, I wanna make it clear that I didn't go in no executive closed session on this matter. And it sounds like the same matter where because, um, for certain reasons, I wasn't really welcomed in the, um, executive session. So I'm gonna abstain because I don't know any details about it. Ain't been talked about publicly. But I have a question through you to this Wheeler. What is the definition of this water crisis thing that you wanna drop?
What do you mean? What do you mean?
What is it? What do it say on the paper? Maybe I can pull it up and read it. I'd have to cut my phone back around. You might have it in front of you.
No, I just wanted to ask you. You're asking for the title of the resolution?
Yeah, what is it? What is they asking to drop?
Settlement Water Cases. It has the case number.
Settlement Water Case and the case number is a what? A federal or state court case?
It's a- it's a federal case, Captain, for all of the water litigation.
You got some state court claims too, don't you, Ann?
There are many, many cases throughout the state of Michigan for water.
But this specific one is a federal court case.
The caption for the Flint Water Cases has the court has done it. It- it has- they're under this- this caption.
Great, thank you. Uh, one more question if I may. One more question if I may. Ms. Wheeler, we filed an intent to sue letter way back. I don't know if you was the city attorney. You familiar with that?
Yes.
Have the timeframes on that intent to sue letter, um, bypassed us and we didn't file anything? Or is they still alive? Do you know?
Um, I- I don't wanna misspeak, but I- I- so- so I'm asking you to just move this, but, um-
I didn't understand what you said.
I said, "I don't wanna sneak out of turn. I don't have it in front of me, but it's likely that most of them have ran."
It's likely what?
That most of the cases have been ran, that they're- that they have expired.
Can you find out a definite answer and whether you let me know privately or publicly? I wanna know the answer to that question.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I've been trying. I've been trying to get the city to move on that for years.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on the drop. Janelle?
Thank you for calling the City of Flint. Please be assured that your call will be answered quickly as possible.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I'm sorry. I was muted. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, abstain. I did not attend the closed session on the discussion about a water settlement. I'm not privileged to information regarding it, and so I abstain for those reasons.
That's five yes and one abstention.
Since five yes and one abstention, that most- that, um, resolution is dropped. That brings us to the tabled resolution, which was the setting of the public hearing that was on the table, two zero zero four two six point one. Is that correct, Janelle?
Public hearing passed, didn't it?
Which one- so which one- which one is tabled?
Yes, it has. You tabled, uh- Other one. Tabled two zero zero four one four.
Yes, okay. So is there a motion to pick it up off the table?
Madam President, I would so move to pick that up off the table.
There's a motion to pick it up off the table. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis has seconded solo. What is the motion now?
Madam President, the- if I made a first motion included that we would table it until after the last. I have no problem moving to pick it up off the table, but I think you had already agreed to do that.
That is the la- we are asking. So what is your- what are you saying, Councilman May?
No, I'm just saying I'm ready to vote, 'cause I thought we had agreed to do it anyway.
So is there a motion to-
Vote is to pick it up off the table.
Yes, there's a- there's a motion to pick it up off the table and it's been properly seconded by Mr. Davis. And so is there any discussion on picking it up off of the table? Hearing none. Roll call on picking it up off the table, please.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mayes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no.
Vote is six yes, zero no. What is the motion from this body?
Madam President, can you say what you just took off the table?
We just took off the table. Resolution two zero zero four one four, Metron Farmier LLC Residential and Commercial Water Meters.
Yeah, Madam President, um, for the purpose of discussion, I'll move it to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there support for that motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
I support the motion.
Been moved and properly supported. Is there any discuss-
Yeah, Madam President, through you to Mr. Ed- Mr. Edwards, what have we voted on here, um, as it relates to these residential and commercial, um, water meters?
Uh, this is the vendor, Metron Farmier. They're the vendor for the commercial. It's really commercial, um, water meters. Uh, 'cause we've been using Badger primarily for the residential one. So these are, uh, the commercial meters, um, and it's just about, you know, we're in that phase as we've been restoring and taking care of residential meters. We're also moving into the phase of getting commercial meters, um, installed as well. So this is to provide that supply of the commercial meters to be able to get that part of the job done.
So why do the resolution mention residential? 'Cause it kinda threw me off. It was a different company. I'm getting calls from residents telling me the name of that company. It didn't match up in my mind. So why would this resolution say residential and commercial? Why wouldn't it just say commercial?
'Cause in a few- 'cause, yes, I mean, you're correct. Your observation is correct. Because in a few circumstances, those were used as, um, residential meters as well. They both- the- the- to- to- the- the technology of it is this. Whether you're using the Badger meter or this Metron Farmer meter, both meters work off of using, um, cell phone network. So they both have that capability of use. But Metron Farmier- Metron Farmier also makes the residential. They make them both residential, commercial. So my best understanding out of it after having talked with the customer service and- and- and, uh, with the water service center is that there has been some interchanging of the two meters, the two types. Not in a lot of instances. I'd say probably in five percent of the circumstance, there's been an interchange. So I guess the- the best- the best answer is that they have the Metron, uh, Farmier residential on hand and they were installed as well along with the Badger meter. But the primary use of this particular vendor is for commercial.
That concerns me because my- of the residents I got a call from, two, three, four, five, or six, however many, where they say, "Councilman May, do I trust these people? Is they for real or is they just somebody trying to get in the house?" So now you're not saying that we gonna have two different companies dealing and knocking residential doors. It's a letter been sent out and stuff. This company won't be involved with residential, or will they? Make it clear for me one last time.
No, there's not. Vanguard is the- Vanguard is the installer. That's- that's what you're talking about. Vanguard is the installer. That- it is our responsibility to acquire the meters. Vanguard is the installer.
So is the resolution worded properly? Should it stay like it is?
Yes, that's correct. There's nothing wrong with the resolution. This is the equipment. All we're talking about, we're not talking about the installer. We're only talking about purchasing the equipment.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam, um, Chair. Madam President?
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I have- I have a question and I- I- I don't know if this has been answered. Um, Clyde, when will the residential water meters, um, be complete? The, um-
The- the-
Aren't we removing- replacing all of the residential water meters?
Correct.
Because I've been getting calls. Go ahead, Clyde.
No, I would- I know. I was- I was just- I was just, uh, acknowledging that your statement was correct. I mean, you go ahead and tell- ask me another question.
Okay, so, um, now there's not a charge to the, um, resident, is it?
No.
Okay. Hmm, all right.
This is part of the- this is part of the water program. Uh, you know, all the meters- all the meters needed to be changed. All the- all the water meters, residential home meters, had to be replaced.
Okay, so do you know, um, so do you know when that will be complete?
Uh, it's, uh, it- yeah, uh, the- the projection- the projection was for the end of the year, but that was before COVID. So now I'm told things are kinda- I'm- I'm- I'm told that things are kinda, you know, there- there've been some-
Muted.
In terms of, just like the, uh, lead pipe replacement business, we're on fourth- we're on second and third notices, um, to try to get people to, you know, to- to let us, you know, change out those meters. And so- and- and that number, that number is as high as five thousand right now, is what I'm understanding. So, um, it- it- we're about halfway through the program, um, you know, based on all the water customers. We're about- they've got about half the number installed of the total, uh, population, if you will, of meters. But we're- but we are up against some resistance.
Okay, let me ask another question. What are we doing about residents? Did you know that, um, some residents, particularly over- over in, um, University Park, some of the residents have small meters and some have large meters? I didn't know that. I didn't even know that that even, I mean, that would be something that- that was- had- had been done. And so those who have large meters, they're getting charged, um, an additional, um, fee. I mean, their- their water bills are higher as opposed to the ones for the smaller.
And if- if I- if I could- if I could help you out with that, I think they're referring to the line size, 'cause that- I think that's built into the master fee schedule. That line size, the size of the line that goes into the house, the size of the line that connects to the meter, is there's- that- that's in your master fee schedule.
Okay, so my question is, when they get their meter, um, replaced, will it be a small meter or a large meter or what size meter?
Well, the meter that, yeah, I think that it- the- the- the meter seems to be pretty standard. The meter that's being used, um, as far as I can tell, is the- is a pretty standard meter. I mean, there's- there's- there's no variation like that for size of meter.
Okay, okay.
That had to do with the size of the line that was running the house. But the meter is just standard. They're using standard meters, uh, that- that- that, as I said, they connect to cell towers.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Griggs?
Yeah, uh, if I'm my answer-
Mr. Winfrey, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Unless you have a privileged motion, Ms. Winfrey Carter has the floor.
Okay, I just wanted to answer her question.
Oh, okay.
You do. Go ahead, Mr. Griggs.
Okay, uh, usually five eighths line is, uh, you know, regular house meter. But if somebody has like an irrigation system or a sprinkler system, they have a larger line size, like, uh,
Uh-huh.
uh, three quarter inch or something like that, because they need, you know, more water for a sprinkler system or an irrigation system. That's why.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up, um, for me, uh, Ms. Griggs. 'Cause I was having a hard time understanding that.
So if there's- is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call-
Madam President, Madam President, real quick. Through you to Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, you say half of the, um, meters have been changed, correct?
That is my understanding. Yes, sir.
Okay, now I don't know how I wanna do this formally or whatever, but Janelle, y'all can get it. But I wanna request kinda like a- a quick study. I wanna know if the water bills went up, down, or stayed the same for those meters that- customers that have been changed. I wanna know if the- when we look at the meter changes, the new meters, do the water customers' bills go up, down, or stay the same? For the most part, that's what I wanna see. Now who would that request go to, Mr. Edwards?
I'm gonna take that. I'm gonna take your request to Amanda. Uh, one of the things I know- one of the things I did learn about these particular meters is they're- they're- they're, uh, much more reliable. And they reveal a lot of information to the homeowner. The actual homeowner can understand where leakage is at in their own house. There's an application that you can use for it. So you- you have to-
No, that's good.
You have to- I'm sorry?
That's- that- I say that's good, but you see, what my concern is, if we've had bad meters for years and we got some of the highest water rates, um, I'm gonna be curious to see with the new meters. I'm praying and hoping that people's bill don't go up. Um, if it stayed the same, remember, we got people say we got the highest bills in the country. If it goes lower, hallelujah. But I wanna kinda see what that- you know, I ain't putting a hard timeframe, but rather than me get calls about it, I wanna be proactive and kinda see what's happening with them customers' bills. And, you know, maybe we can do a sample of some of them, but I don't wanna false sample. I kinda wanna know how these new meters is affecting that. And then as a council- And then, as a council, people don't know it, but the council, because of the master fee schedule, got the total ability to lower and raise water rates. Thank you.
So, if there's no further discussion, roll call on the approval, please.
Mr. Winfrey.
Mr. Winfrey has left the meeting.
Okay. Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Greggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no.
The vote is five yes, zero no. Um, that brings us to liquor license.
There are none, Madam President.
Thank you. That brings us to the introduction and first reading of ordinances. That would bring us to the emergency, is that, or no?
Yes.
Actually, second...
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman Mays?
How many council people is present?
Five.
We don't have enough to approve an emergency ordinance.
We sure don't, so, um, so, is...
Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
I would move to postpone this until Monday's meeting.
Postpone the emergency ordinance? There's a motion to postpone the emergency ordinance until Monday's meeting. Is there support for that?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Davis?
I second.
Been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? Wait a minute, did we postpone that? Is there any discussion? Hearing, uh, roll call.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Greggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no.
Vote is five yes, zero no, to postpone that to the next council meeting. That brings us to second reading and enactment of ordinances.
There are none.
That brings us to additional discussion items. The first one being council leadership discussion.
Yeah, Madam President.
Ms. Mays?
Yeah. I'm gonna be looking close at this, um, vote next month for president, vice president, who's gonna be president, and who's gonna name finance chair. I count very good, and Mr. Davis, I'm glad you're in the meeting, because I can see Mayor Neely, Kate Fields, men, and y'all trying to decide the leadership. You, Kate Fields, Santino, I don't know if y'all gonna make Mr. Greggs president, Kate Fields yourself or whatever, but Mr. Davis, I'm hoping that you don't vote to put us in a leadership position of people going constantly at people, trying to get them. I've seen some of that tonight. You, I hope you don't let this community down. Now, when this thing start out, I'm gonna add a first vote. Ms. Galloway been serving. I ain't tripping about no position. I've been on this council for seven years. I'm gonna work with no position, and I work well. No titles, don't care about them. I wouldn't sell myself out and cut deals with these folks and let no mayor influence me. Now, if they wanna name you president, so be it. Am I happy or sad with it? I ain't tripping. If you wanna name Kate Fields president, I'm tripping. If you wanna name Santino Eva president, I'm tripping. I'd rather you name Greggs than to name Kate Eva or, uh, Santino. Name yourself and see what they do. No title do I care about when it come to the politics of this council. Will, um, Ms. Galloway be president? It'll be better than Ms. Fields. So, I'm gonna be looking and listening close. You vote second, I vote first. I'm gonna see what you do. I probably vote for myself. Don't care about it or not. I'll tell you what, it's a serious business. Um, I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna say it cautiously and carefully. Your vision of who can help, as you said in the news clip, black folks, I ain't impressed with Trump, and I don't think he the best thing for me, and I ain't gonna stay the course with him, and I will change horses in the middle of the stream. But this council president, just like Biden and Trump, I might have a different view. I sure hope I don't have to go through a presidency, um, under this great city of Flint. At this present time, maybe another time if I see him change their ways, but I don't think Ms. Fields should be president at this time. That's part of my discussion.
Is there anyone else that has any discussion? If you mean, um, Councilman Mays, it, then, then we're done. Um, that takes us to the emergency more, emergency, um, executive orders of the Supreme Court that you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, this should be just as quick as and frank as that one. We put motions on the floor, and some of us has voted because we couldn't get the mayor to come up in an emergency. The Supreme Court, in my opinion, have emphasized what I was trying to say to this legislative body, whether all are here to hear it, or some are here to hear it. It's recorded, it's record. Our ordinance on the state of emergency, in my opinion, is more specific on what the executive officer should or shall do in an emergency. If he making rules and regulations, partially opening City Hall curfews or whatever, he must convene expediently with the legislative body. Emergency, this one went on for months, and it's like a dictatorship. It's like somebody punking the legislative body out, and not a Supreme Court then spoke. And you see how we had to postpone the meeting, and one person in a whole state ain't got that type of authority, and emergencies or something quick, and then you go back to good government. You deal with executive and legislative, and you don't let the executive body divide and conquer you for their own well-being. They don't care sometime about you, they care about what they doing. And our job is to be a check and balance and set budgets and rules and see our government operate. So, I'm saying to the council members, and I wish Mr. Winfrey was here, and that he can listen to the recording, why is a charter give you the power to have people, whether it's building inspectors, blight officers, mayors, to come to you? And they can't come to you in your meeting telling you what they gonna do? We didn't call them for that. I called Mr. Neely up here to say, hey, look, do you understand what the law is telling you we should do? I say God is good because the Supreme Court emphasized my argument on a state level with a legislative branch and an executive branch type person. And you see how quick they moved, and we back in electronic meetings. But the same thing should happen locally. And this council, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Neely be at these Monday meeting not to give us an update. Janelle, you can send the communications, Clyde, if you here, you can make it known, but I'm formally asking him to come up, and I'm gonna ask that this council discussion stay on the agenda, and if he come up, I'll request it be moved to a special order. But don't come up to give me an update. Come up to about what I wanna talk about. Your presence in an emergency expediently when I read some rule, order, or change on the news. He's not the legislative branch, he's not the rulemaker. He, under the ordinance, we can amend, modify, change, extend, repeal, and then tell somebody say we out of the emergency locally. I heard Mr. Woodson talk about the county and senate over and all of that. We need to talk about this. We need to hold the administration accountable, and this is just one aspect of accountability. As I wrap this up, we need to hold them accountable in appointments, these emergency ordinance, the way government operates, and that's our job. Appointees do what appointees do. Council people do what council people do. And for those council people who refuse to do their job in a timely manner, for those council people who don't understand their job, and therefore, they just don't know what they, we should be doing, read the charter. Our greatest power is to hold folks accountable to the charter, including ourselves, and, um, to make sure we do what's best for the residents of the city of Flint in all cases, particularly in an emergency. I request that the staff on my behalf send the communications out once again, and you can put in there need be, or you can tell them, Clyde, don't come to give me an update. I'm a councilman, I know pretty much what's happening in the city. Come to talk about government operations in an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, that brings us to, um, final council comment. Mr. Mays, we can start with you.
Yeah, I'm gonna say this. Um, in seven years, I've stayed close to home. In the last three weeks or so, I've asked constituents' calls, I've did communications with certain departments in, from Stockton, California. I've had people on Facebook wish me well, tell me it wasn't deserved break, but I'm working, I'm supplementing my income, and I will file my taxes, and so, I can appreciate the invitation to Stockton, California, right outside Sacramento. But also, I've been getting communications back and forth. I got communications and news clips about the proposed nine o'clock closing of stores, I think prematurely, and I think politically. You got the people who was advocating it the most voted no for police, protect and serve, breakup lottery. They voted no for blight cleanup, not just at the stores, but in these streets and these abandoned houses. And I'm like, how can they have the audacity to vote no? And then squander twenty-four million dollars of savings, listening to Eric Sciossoni and Mr. Neely, and, and then try to get creative on the backs of taxpayers, small businesses. There's been no study of their ta, of their margin of profit. Will they close? Will they be boarded up? Will they leave the city? I think it's a irresponsible articulation. I think the media should tell both the pros and the cons as the elected officials articulate their thoughts. I think the media should learn about the previous proposals in order to break that up. Lottering signs, cameras, more police, and who voted yes and who voted no. And now, I think it's kinda like a grasp for straws, and that ain't gonna solve crime in the city of Flint. My position is this, we can look at some things, but let's not be hasty and let's not ride a false wave of hope as it relates to these proposals that hasn't been well thought out yet. Maybe we'll get to do that in this process. So, I'll say this, as the election draws close, who sits in the seat in the president's seat, the House and the Senate, has a lot to do with funding coming to states and cities. Um, people can say what they want. I'll talk about God whenever I want, because that's where my faith is at. I'll be honest and truthful, and I'm telling you, when I seen that, Mr. Davis, what you were saying about Mr. Trump, I couldn't believe it. I don't agree with it, and, um, it's not true. He's not the best for black folks, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is Mr. Davis still on the line?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes, I'm here, thank you for indulging, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I, I, I'm, I'm, I haven't voted yet, but I'm contravening, contemplating voting for President Trump. Why? Because I'm tired of them Democrats, they don't have to work for nobody's black votes. Up to ninety-one percent of us vote automatically Democrat. Bump that, people losing everything. Foreclosures, the House need rehab, we living in deplorable condition, third world condition. I'm talking about the poor folks, not middle class. Now, they're too comfortable, the Democrats. I've been with all of my life, and people wanna politick it ass, recall it on and on, I'm a sellout, and I'm everything, bootlickers and all. I'm a million miles from that. I was born on Bundy Street, I was born on North Side, went to Martin and Northwestern Homes and everything else. I'm more Flintstone than anything that I know, and forever will be. But I wanna put that puppy to sleep. My attendance is flawless. I do not play with nothing, I do, I believe in winning. We get different treatment as poor people. Gretchen Womack got in, hell, we don't hear a word about water no more. We still in conditions like it was when Obama was in. I hope Trump, and I make my words sweet, because you never know when God gonna bless us with somebody. Trump and them got the money. We need, this is divided states of America, we got to unite. I'm not gonna be one of them black folks back in the sixties and seventies with these marches and act like this is all racism. Black folks is more racist. Why? Because it's no longer a vote, it's a dictatorship. We gotta break that. Negroes better start making these folks earn your vote. You better make them earn your vote. Quit letting these, uh, so-called activists intimidate you. People elected me to put us in a better place. I'm working my behind off to get, if nothing else, second order in a better place. Now, I gotta meet with President Trump. Just like Matt Weaver, when she said he was not welcome, he came to Flint, they said he didn't, he went to Bethel on the North Side. Ben Carson during the development with Obama, whoever, started it. He did send thirty million dollars. I was in the press conference in the main lobby of City Hall. Enough is enough. Democrats is all right with me, either way. But I'm tired of Biden and anybody else coming here and automatically think we supposed to vote as a black person. Hell, no. Earn our vote. And that's why I met with President Trump. So, let's get clear, I'm not a sellout. Let's be very clear, I'm not a sellout. And I thank you, and when it come to liquor stores, it's time for them to clean the act up. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to Ms. Winfrey Carter.
I guess I'm confused. I'm trying to figure out how did, uh, President Trump earned the black vote? Anyway, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, um, check the status of a couple of, um, referrals. And Janelle, I would like to check the status of the decorative lights outlining, um, Chevrolet, um, I guess, um, what, where else? Miller Road, the decorative lights that, um, different, um, constituents have called in talking about. I would like to check the status on that. And then, also, I thought about something. I would like to check the status, and maybe I'll save this one until I can get, um, get the address. But, um, and also, I would like to make sure that, um, the neighborhood safety officers will be at the meeting on Monday to discuss the ordinances that deal with blight, those ordinances that they are responsible for, as far as, um, the city of Flint and, and, and the blight department. Okay? and, and, and the blight department, okay?
Yes, ma'am, I'll make that request.
Alrighty, thank you, ma'am.
You all set, Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, that brings us to Mr. Griggs.
Yeah, okay, uh, I would like to, uh, make it clear to Councilman Mays that, uh, I adopted a three-mile stretch of Interstate sixty-nine in my ward before I became a city councilman. That goes from I-75 to, uh, east of Hammerburg. So, well, no, east of Grand Travers, it's a three-mile stretch. And believe it or not, you know, I actually worked, uh, forty hours a week for twenty-five years without any gap in employment. So, I did have a productive life. Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanna say, um, to my colleagues, thank you, thank you, thank you very much for making the sacrifice to, um, complete the work of the, the community on today. And, um, that's all I want to say. Please, 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 be safe, people. Um, I noticed the other day, um, five thousand cases in Michigan in one day. So, just protect your family, um, and be safe, and know that, um, you can vote during, I think the hours now are, is it, Janelle, is it nine to five?
Eight to five, Monday through Friday, nine to five, Saturday and Sunday.
Eight to five, you said?
Yes, Monday through Friday.
Okay, Monday through Friday. And so, please, 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 um, exercise whatever choices that you want to make. And so, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President.
Councilman Mays?
I think we got five people, I ain't gonna hold it up, but I tell you what, I pray to God for the people of the city of Flint, me and my family, and, um, the people across the nation. And so, I so moved to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there support for that motion?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter?
I'll support that motion.
You should move and properly support it, is there, nope, um, roll call on the adjournment, please.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no to adjourn.
Vote is five yes, zero no to adjourn, have a great night, we are adjourned.
Goodbye.